Good evening, everybody. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the South Haven City Council. It is Monday, January the 16th, 2023. I'd like to call this meeting in order. The invocation this evening will be given by Pastor Steve Smolligan of Hope Reform Church. Good evening, Stephen. Thanks for coming.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you once again for this opportunity. Would you pray with me? Almighty God, we come to you at the start of this meeting. We acknowledge that all authority is yours and that any authority we hold on earth is a trust from you to us. I pray for the agenda of this meeting. I pray patient listening. I pray honest sharing. I pray for sensitive spirits, open ears, and humbled hearts. There are many perspectives on most things, and despite the outcome of any one decision, let the process of arriving at each decision be open and fair. The needs and opportunities of our community are significant and many. Let priorities be clear. Let resources be used wisely. Let the needs of all be genuinely considered. Let all things done in the name of this city, in the end, reflect you. Bless those who serve, those seated here, and all others who serve this city. Guide them so that we who live in this community, who are blessed to do so, may benefit from how faithfully they hold and use the authority you have yielded to them. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. All right, and now if you're joining for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call.
Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Wendy Onuki.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
Steve Schlock.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilkins.
Here.
Scott Smith.
Here.
Make a motion to excuse Steve Schlock.
Second.
Motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Schlock. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post no, he's excused. And that takes us to the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post no, it is approved. And then just so, kind of an early heads up, we have a couple items that are just reports, so items eight and 16, we'll do our best, we're going to hold any public comments on those to the end. And I know we've got, we will allow, when it gets to Mr. Robey's report, try to get creative and allow some, I know there's some questions specific to that, we'll allow, you know, folks to come up and maybe list your questions while he's still here to utilize his time effectively. So if that sounds good to everybody, we will roll on. So that takes us to the update from Van Buren County Commissioner Gail, oh, she's out there, Gail Patterson Gladney. Good evening.
Good evening. I want to wish everyone a happy Martin Luther King Junior Day. Things would be so much different if he hadn't lived and served, and today's a day of remembering service, and I want to thank all of you for serving. No one knows all that you go through and your staff, except for you, and also, I used to be in your seat, and I saw that all that took place. So thank you for serving. It's not an easy job, but thank you. I do have a quote. I know Jeff Arnold usually has a quote. I don't know if he has this one, but "The time is always right to do what is right." And so many people in our city served today, others, and made a special point to do that, and I just think that that's what makes our city great, having good citizens and those who serve in our city. I don't know if many of you know what iHeart is? Have any of you heard of it? You have? Oh, good, because one of the other county commissioners sent me this article from iHeart, and it says, "The World Atlas recently released their list of the 15 most beautiful towns in America, and one, Michigan City, made the list." Can you guess who? According to the self-proclaimed original online geography source, South Haven is one of the most scenic places in the United States. And then they go on to why. So I, to make things short, I'm going to send the article to your city manager, city manager Hojer, and then if you could share that with the commission, the city council. But I thought that was very interesting. We are up there with city in Hawaii and Alaska, and so I commend you for the work that you made, did to help to make South Haven so great. We gave a proclamation for Commissioner Hanson's years of service. He's served the county for over 50 years, not all of them on the county commission, but he has retired from that position, and he was honored and recognized by Senator Eric Nesbit, Representative Beth Griffin, the Historical Society, and other groups and individuals for his years of service for the county. And our certificate of proclamation was presented by the Board of Commissioners. We also, last week, voted to rename the Board of Commissioners' room, the Don Hanson Board of Commissioners' room, for all that he has done to serve our county. In his place, Tina Leary, some of you might have remembered her, she was a former clerk for the county, and she is taking over his spot, Don Hanson. She was elected to be, to represent District Six. Let's see, okay. The Marijuana Operation and Oversight Grant Program, the board approved the request for community health to submit a renewal grant application on behalf of the Van Buren County. And the Cannabis Regulatory Agency, CRA, is preparing to administer the 2023 Marijuana Operation and Oversight Grant Program for Michigan counties. These grants, which are available to counties, will only be approved for education, communication, and outreach regarding the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act and the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act. And I am going to skip over some things, because I have a lot I can report, but I'll save some for later. I just wanted to invite any residents or their families who are going to turn 100 years old or older to let me know, and the county can give citizens recognition to them. We have a lady who's going to be 103 in Colvert, and we're trying to get her recognition for her before her birthday in February. We don't want to miss anybody, and it's quite an achievement to make 100.
Do you want a quick funny story? I did one, I did one for a resident at the nursing home here in town, and she pointed out that the fact that we had the birth date wrong on her proclamation.
She was sharp.
She was still real good. So, yep, she's like, "That's wrong." I was like, "Oh, I'm sorry."
Also, we had a presentation by Chris Shiver from the DCS about the broadband, and there were still some questions afterwards about broadband. First of all, the county decided to send DCS $3.5 million to work on broadband for different applications, federal grants that are available. I was the only dissenter. I said we should send all $7 million to them so that they would have a better chance to get the grants. So we will see what happens, but Chris is going to come to the supervisors' meeting February 23rd. Do you attend?
Yes.
Okay, so, or the mayor could attend, at the Conference Center, Van Buren Conference Center. That's February 23rd at 7:00. Chris will be there to answer questions, because it seems to be there's a lot of questions still. The county wants to divide the ARPA funds up evenly so that not one section of the county gets more funds than the other. So that's going to be another challenge. And I think that's all I'm going to report today. Does anyone have any other questions? No?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Thanks for the report. We appreciate it.
Uh-huh.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to the consent agenda items A through H.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda items A through H.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion before we roll call? All right, seeing none, this is a roll call move.
Arnold.
Yes.
Onuki.
Yes.
Reiser.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes, that passes. It takes us to new business. City council will be asked to receive a presentation from Doug Radavell of Radavell Hefner LLC, the city's independent auditing firm, and accept the audit report as presented and place the report on file in the finance department. And good evening, and Michelle as well. So good evening.
Good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is Peter Hefner. I represent Radavell Hefner. Doug Radavell worked on the engagement. I reviewed the engagement. Unfortunately, he had another commitment in Florida today. So I'm here to talk about your audit report and answer any questions you may have, and I wanted to start out with just a couple items. This year, you had a financial statement audit as well as a compliance audit, or I would refer to it as a single audit, and that results in three opinions being provided, one on the financial statements. That opinion is on page one, and it's two and a half pages long, and I'm going to summarize it, I hope, in about three sentences. It's our opinion that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position, results of operations, cash flows where applicable of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund, the aggregate, aggregated component units, as well as the aggregate remaining funds in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. That's what I would refer to as a clean opinion, that you are following the standards promulgated by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board and required to be followed by the state of Michigan. And so the opinion on the financial statements is on page one. The opinion that we provide on your system of internal controls over financial reporting is required under government auditing standards. That opinion is provided on page 129. And I'm going to get this. And what I wanted to point out in regards to that opinion is we did not identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in your system of internal controls over financial reporting. That opinion is required under government auditing standards, and the last opinion we provide is on your compliance with federal grant requirements. So for 2022, you were required to have what is referred to as a single audit, that it is an audit of the financial statements as well as your compliance. That last opinion is provided on page 131. And that opinion is, I wanted to point out that we did not find any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses with your system of internal controls over compliance with federal grant requirements. A summary of all of our opinions and information being submitted to the federal government is on page 135, so it provides that we have an unqualified opinion on the financial statements, no issues identified on your system of internal controls, and no issues identified with your compliance with federal grant requirements. And that summary information on page 135 is submitted to the federal Audit Clearing House, and three positive opinions, so that's great. Want to thank Michelle and your staff. The financial statements are the responsibility of management. It's our responsibility to express an opinion on those financial statements. And I've talked a little bit about our opinions. Your staff prepares a comprehensive annual financial, or an annual comprehensive financial report, that name changed this year, which includes a letter of transmittal, management's discussion and analysis, the basic financial statements, which begin on page 15, and go through approximately page 22, and the slides we're going to look at are going to focus on those basic financial statements. So in the basic financial statements, we have government-wide financial statements that show just your governmental activities and your business-type activities aggregated together, so very summarized, following the full accrual basis of accounting or business perspective. Then we have our fund financial statements. That would be general fund and all the remaining funds being presented. Then we have the proprietary fund financial statements where we display, or you have displayed your business-type activities as well as those internal service operations. And we're going to walk through some of these slides that will just touch upon each of those financial statements. So here is a picture of your expenses and program revenues of your governmental activities. This would be the general fund and your remaining governmental funds, as well as your internal service funds, and it's just showing to what extent are the governmental activities self-supporting. So we're comparing your expenses with program revenues, which are charges for services, operating grants, and capital grants. And the differential here is very consistent with cities across Michigan. We work with governmental and not-for-profit entities exclusively, and the difference between the blue and the purple is being supported by unrestricted revenues, property taxes, as well as state shared revenues, unrestricted interest income, but your biggest investment is public safety. And this information is displayed on page 16 and 17 of the financial statements, but very typical picture here. I would point out that that Public Works purple, that purple component includes your Act 51 funding, so gas and weight taxes. When we look at the purple for public safety, that would just be operating in capital grants as well as charges for services, various fees. The next picture that we have here are the revenues of your governmental activities, and it just shows what is the diversity across the, all your governmental funds, where are those dollars coming from? I personally like to see a large component being property taxes, as that's within your control. Rather, it's nice to get a grant occasionally, but you can't control that, and it's good to have a large component of these revenues being within your control. The next slide that we have is your general fund revenues, and this information is presented on page 20 of the financial statements. But just over time, what's happening with your revenues, you can see a slight dip in those property taxes for 2022. That relates to the state reimbursement of those personal property taxes that they had changed the law upon. Across all the funds, your property taxes actually increased. And this is a picture of all of the funds. And that's the result in increasing taxable value. The next slide that we have are your expenditures by function of your general fund, and again here, we see public safety increase from the year before, and typically consists, consistently increases over time. I would point out that the initial slides that we were looking at are, is, were the full accrual basis of accounting. So the purchase of a new police vehicle would be shown as an expense when it would be depreciated, and in the case of your general fund, we're talking the modified accrual basis of accounting or more closely cash in, cash out. In this case, that modified accrual basis of accounting would show a police car or piece of equipment being an expenditure in the year in which it was actually purchased, and that's more of the budgetary basis that you follow throughout the year. But a different perspective between the different presentations here. The next slide that we have are your expenditures by function as a percentage of total general fund expenditures, and you see over time, you can see the top line, that's your investment in public safety, and it has typically been, if you were to average that out, increasing over time as a percentage of total general fund expenditures. You can see general government declined slightly, and the remainder are very consistent, year to year, as a percent of the total expenditures. The next slide that we have here is your general fund fund balance as a percentage of expenditures and transfers out. And so you can see you had a slight increase in 2022. That typically fluctuates based on the dollars coming in, but also based on the projects that you have, that you're funding with general fund dollars or transferring dollars to fund those projects. The next slides that we have are related to your business-type activities. Here is a picture of the change in the bottom line for your electric fund. In 2022, you can see approximately $1.6 million increase in net position. Your water fund, approximately $1 million increase in net position. Your sewer fund, approximately $2 million increase in net position. And these three slides we just looked at, those are the full accrual perspective or the business perspective of accounting. So your business-type activities are following very closely the standards that are being used by businesses in the area. When we were talking about your general fund and your governmental funds, that's that modified accrual basis of accounting, more closely following cash in and cash out. So in this case, you would purchase a capital asset, let's say pipe in the ground, and as it depreciates, it would force that top line number down, but in the year in which you purchased pipe, it wouldn't actually impact this balance at all. So business perspective. Here are some select funds and their fund balance over time. The general fund is presented in the front of the report, pages 18 and 20, as a major fund. All of your remaining governmental funds are non-major. They're not big enough to be reported as a major fund in the front of the report. They are displayed in the back of the report, but you can see those non-major funds over time, very consistent, fun balance year after year. I would expect major and local streets to fluctuate based on projects that occur. Are there questions that I can answer about the financial statements? There is a ton of deal, detail within this report. If you want to see some historical dollars in and dollars out, I would suggest take a look at pages 111 through 114. It gives you 10 years' worth of where did we end the year, and 10 years of what came in and what went out, so great source of information from a historical perspective.
Any questions in this group? And if not, I don't have any. A lot of numbers report well done, and well done, Michelle and staff. I'll leave it at that. How's that sound? We appreciate it, so.
Thank you.
All right, I think that's all we got. Thank you again for coming. Thanks for the presentation.
Do we, do we need a motion to accept the audit report?
Yeah, let's just get that down.
I make a motion to accept the audit report for fiscal year 2021, 2022.
Second.
All right, motion second to accept that report and place it on file. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post no, it is done. Thank you again. All right, takes us next, Mr. Jim Robey will present on the 2020 Community Health Assessment from the Upjohn Institute. So good evening, Jim, and then, as I said, feel free, we'll present away, and yeah, you're up, and then.
I'm new at this.
What's that?
I'm new at this.
And when you're done, maybe if you want to jump down, if people, like I said, we allow if they have specific questions relative to that, and then maybe you could also set the stage for, I know you'll be back in a few weeks, so we don't spend a lot of time duplicating. So any questions relative to this specific report while you're here, you can ask, answer, and then we'll let you sneak out. So good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. It's good to see you all, and thanks for having me here. I'll go through a series of things, and let me tell you about my role today. I'm here at your request, and this is, there's no charge for me being here. This isn't part of the past project, it's not a part of the future project. I'm not representing the W. Upjohn Institute for Employment Research, who was my employer at the time when we were doing this study, which we released in 2020, in the middle of a pandemic. Probably one of the reasons that we haven't met on this before, my guess would be, is that at the institute, during the pandemic, we were not allowed to go to public meetings. We're not allowed actually to go to any meetings, and then in mid, excuse me, mid-2021, I retired from the institute, started my own firm, and continue to work with clients, including in this, as you know, with you. So kind of a timing issue, and doing a report in the middle of a pandemic was challenging at best. So the study statement was the city of South Haven asked the Upjohn Institute for assistance in better understanding and assessing the economic challenges to the city and the region. This report presents the results of our examination of the economic housing and social challenges and opportunities facing key segments of the city of South Haven's residential and business communities, and offers policy directions and options that the city can consider. So the team was, I was the principal investigator, and that's why I agreed to come back. George Ehrcheck, longtime researcher working with the city, good friend of mine, actually I inherited his position when he retired, and as you know, on the upcoming study that we hope to present in a few weeks, he's my partner in that area, but he also lives in North Carolina, so he is not here today. Dr. Katie Bolter, Garrett Anderson, and Emily Boyle were also part of the team at the time. In doing this work, we worked closely with all of you, first with Brian Desette, and when Kate was city, Assistant City Manager, and then following through with that, and then, of course, Jim Hetten, Sheriff, and Patricia Mullen, who were co-temporaneously doing another study, and we capitalized on that in doing our work. Again, the study was released in, very late in 2020. A couple of things I think that's important are, times have changed, and when we look at the data, we looked at the inflow and outflow of workers from Census on the Map. That was 2017 data. We looked at a lot of American community survey data by Census Trax, which included population, employment, education, income, poverty, migration, patterns in housing. I'm saying all this because I know not all of you can see this easily. We used Burning Glass Data from 2019, which is now lightcast. Those are the folks that do the web scraping and tell you about job postings and those sorts of things. And then in 2020 through, from 2019 to 2020, we weekly monitored Airbnb vacancy opportunities and price points. So the timing of the report is important. The timing affects the policy recommendations, and, you know, kind of going back to this team, we had some pretty heated discussions over some of our policy recommendations, and honestly, I would not necessarily make some of those recommendations today. It's a different environment that we see across many things. In fact, firms engage me to keep them apprised of what's going on almost on a daily basis. I have a reporting system I use regularly for that. And data and conditions change over time. It's important to remember that the question of this study was on community conditions, and thus we were asked to make some recommendations. The data are, for the most part, from a pre-COVID period, and there's no doubt that the pandemic has changed the world, it's changed how people think about their jobs and where they work and other things, and that probably would affect some of our recommendations if we were doing this today. Again, recommendations were made in the middle of a pandemic. Since the study was released, the pandemic and its effects have continued to be pervasive. I was listening coming out tonight about the new variant, and it's less invasive, but likely more spread, so it continues to haunt us. Residential patterns are arguably changing. We see the depopulation of downtowns and other things, we're watching those economics very closely, and it's having a major impact on office space and other things. The workplace has changed. Remote work has become the current trend for many and wherever possible, and that's becoming increasingly challenging for employers, trying to manage things like productivity and others. It creates both opportunities and problems for employers and for places like South Haven. Labor force participation rates are down, particularly among younger workers. We see workers are harder to find and more expensive. We work closely with some folks in West Michigan to track this, and jobs that used to be $12 are probably now $18 to $20 entry points. So it's a different situation, and employers necessarily are substituting capital for labor, meaning that they're using machines where they can. You go to a McDonald's today, and they ask you to sign in. They don't really want you to tell them what you want. So, and we see this in healthcare. You know, when I visit Bronson, they expect me to fill out all my paperwork online and go, "Okay, good, thanks." So everything is changing. So assumptions of the study, as you know, and I'm not telling anybody either in front of me or behind me, and I feel bad my back is to you, I apologize. South Haven's a great place to live, work, and visit. I wish it would have been a little sunnier today when I drove out in the rain tonight, but it wasn't. The city means different things to four key populations. There's visitors, retirees, working residents, and businesses, and the city has a different perspective, and we learned that through some of our And the city has a different perspective, and we learned that through some of our discussions this fall with stakeholders from across the board. City government, residents, and businesses share the concerns of affordable housing for South Haven residents, generating income for city residents, and welcoming and enjoying visitors and seasonal residents while keeping the social cohesiveness of the city. Two major challenges facing the South Haven housing market can be broken down into two areas. High demand essentially for the amenities of view and access to the river and lakefront, and high demand for low to moderate housing for service workers and low to moderate income retirees. The two factors are strongly related. Tourism and affluent homeowners generate an increase in demand for housing while their consumer spending generates a demand for services, including retail hospitality and personal services. So what did we find? And these really are outlined in our executive summary. The population's likely to be static over the next few years. Seasonal visitors, in fact, may outcompete year-round residents for housing. This is not unlike many other beach towns and not. In that first statement, populations are relatively flat in many places. We're working in Clare on some hospital issues and some healthcare issues, and they suffer from the same issues that many kind of smaller and more rural places do. Amenities will continue to attract retirees. You know, we heard this through our study and we heard this in our discussions last fall. In 2018, essentially four in 10 residents were over 60, and that's versus 23% in Michigan. So two out of 10 in Michigan, four out of 10 in South Haven. And these data are for the city of South Haven, the two census tracts. Population of school age kids is dropping. This is a problem everywhere in Michigan or most places in Michigan. Outmigration slightly exceeds inmigration, meaning people moving out slightly exceed people moving in. Most, and I'll show this, well, no, actually I won't, I apologize. Most of the outmigration is to rural areas around South Haven, so people are kind of moving in the region but staying close. Most inmigration is from the Chicago area, not surprising either. In mid 2018, and I'm sure these prices are up, the median home price, that's the kind of the very middle. Half are below, half are above. South Haven, 207,000 essentially, Van Buren County, 131,000, and the state of Michigan, 146. So you are a price point within the city limits for higher priced housing, and that affects the ability and the affordability that we talked about in the in the earlier slide. At the time of the reporting, and we've asked the city manager for the most recent SDR report, there were 623 short-term residence units in South Haven. Nearly 50% were owned by people outside the state of Michigan. Factors affecting homeownership of housing in South Haven is, of course, demand generated by amenities. Lower than average weekly wages in Van Buren County. We don't have those data. They're not available for the city of South Haven. But across Van Buren, 838. Again, these are 2018 data versus 1,057. When we looked at job postings, and I will show you some more interesting data on job postings in 2019 from Burning Glass, about 69% were, those jobs were less than $36,000 a year, about half of which were part-time, actually slightly less than that. Those folks, 36,000 to 55,000, about 15% of job postings, and greater than 55,000, about Top job postings in South Haven in 2019 by sector were retail trade, healthcare and social assistance, food and accommodation, and manufacturing. So it actually is a portfolio of jobs that had openings, not just, it wasn't just an amenities-based economy, but trade, food and accommodation, but also healthcare and manufacturing. Generally, education levels in South Haven are similar to the state of Michigan, but in 2018, there was a lower percentage of 25 to 34-year-olds with bachelor degrees. Other findings that I think are important, if we look at the American Community Survey data for 2010, 17, and 18, clearly, the average age in South Haven is significantly above the rest of Van Buren County and the rest of Michigan. Population change, the red line is Van Buren, and we see some what economists metaphorically like to call negative growth. And so we see it really kind of declining through the Great Recession and in the rebound in 2013. We really see it start to flatten out. Michigan has rebounded somewhat, back to almost a neutral position by 2018, but the rest of Van Buren County also suffered some losses, although not proportionally as great as South Haven. The city is relatively diverse when we look at South Haven in the red, Van Buren in the blue, and Michigan in the gray. We see that the white, non-Hispanic population is actually fairly balanced. The black, non-Hispanic population is very similar to that of Michigan. The Asian population, a little bit lower. Of course, these all have to add up to 100, so it makes sense. Two races or more. South Haven is, actually has higher proportions than the state of Michigan, but less than the rest of Van Buren, a bit underrepresented in other non-Hispanic and Hispanic. We look at labor force participation rates, but when we look at the things that we have just talked about, particularly the aging population and others, labor force participation rates are about 51%. I'm sorry, this is 2017 and 2018. I apologize, that's not properly listed there. Van Buren, a little bit higher, and Michigan, a little bit higher. I'm sure if we looked at those rates today, if they were available, we would find that they're probably even less today. We're seeing across the country some real struggles in getting people to go to work and labor force participation rates to be down. Labor force participation, by the way, is the share of population, 16 and over who are either actively looking for work or unemployed. When we look at labor force participation among prime-age workers, those are folks 25 to 55. South Haven is just a little bit below, but generally, for those folks that are out there in the market, again, 2017, 2018, a bit dated, a little bit below Van Buren County, a little bit below Michigan, but not surprising, again, given this slightly older workforce. If you'll excuse me one moment. When we look at the share of employment in 2017, on the bottom line, 2018 on the top, we see that more than 20% of employment in South Haven is in manufacturing, education, and health services. So schools, community colleges, all that sort of thing, anything that's in here plus health services such as Bronson, just about 19%. Leisure and hospitality employment, so that, again, hotels and those sorts of things, 16% retail trade. Some variation there between 17 and 18, from 13% to 8%, but then the rest are fairly common down through there. So I actually was a bit surprised when I reviewed the report and saw the share of, say, things that were not dependent upon amenities but were in fact based on population and, for lack of a better phrase, export, since most manufacturing is probably not consumed locally, it's probably exported out of out of the region. Employment trends between 2017 and 2018, increases in manufacturing, agriculture, other services, that's a catch-all sort of a thing for anything that that you can't fit into another services category. Positive growth in education and health services, professional and business services, those are essentially knowledge economy jobs, construction, leisure, and hospitality, public administration, a couple areas. And you've got to take this carefully when you look at a small area. Things like finance, wholesale trade, transportation, trade, transportation utilities, and retail trade. The retail trade may be a little troubling to me. The other ones could be just some ebb and flow in the economy, particularly in a small place when you're really looking at, you know, one zip code or something. There's often not a huge supply chain. So things like wholesale trade, one employer comes or goes, upsized, downsized, some of those things will affect that. Job postings by category, and so the dark red is for jobs under 36,000. The, I'm sure, kind of lighter red is 36 to 55, and blue is over 55,000. Retail trade, a lot of job openings, most under 36,000. Healthcare and social assistance, somewhat balanced with a significant number of jobs over 55,000. Accommodation and food services, mostly under 36,000. Manufacturing, again, a bit more balanced. Administrative and support and waste administrative, by the way, is what we would call back office. And so those are the back office things, kind of a bit balanced, not a lot on the higher end, and you can see down, you know, fewer and fewer as you go down. But there are a portfolio of jobs available, at least there were in 2019 according to Burning Glass. The other thing is that these are job postings, and so let me be clear about that. That's different than a job opening. So my guess is that if we're looking at healthcare and social assistance, that Bronson, for instance, has kind of postings for nurses all the time. That doesn't necessarily mean that they need, and I'm just using them as an example, 40 or 50 nurses. They probably need a lot of nurses. So these are postings, not openings, and so each post may include many openings. I thought this was kind of interesting. If you look at this and we look at the job postings in 2019, I think that oftentimes people think that retail and accommodations and food service and other things aren't full-time jobs. With the postings that we were able to glean from Burning Glass, which is the same thing that Michigan Works uses in their analytics, about 40% were part-time, about 60% were full-time. Among those in kind of that middle income group, about a quarter were part-time, and three-quarters were full-time. And when you get into those folks earning 55,000 and above, it was about 20% who were part-time and about 80% were full-time. So I was actually, in honesty, as I reviewed the report, a bit surprised by this. When we look at where people commute to South Haven from, these are census, or not, yeah, there's census tracts. You'll see that people commute in, and it's really hard to see. But if you kind of look by Goebbels and other things, you'll see a line there, that's a 30-minute commute into the city of South Haven. The second line out there is a commute in, is 30 to 60 minutes. And so beyond that, we're really looking up into Berry and others, that there are people that are commuting in from 60 minutes or more into the city. When we look at the outbound, most people kind of live and work in either in South Haven or within that 30-minute commute. So the inbound commuting is much longer distance than the outbound commuting. Some of that may be due to the fact that many of the residents in the in the city and others are already retired or are working from home, and that certainly is an opportunity. Again, this was 27 data. Unfortunately, the Census on the Map folks, folks at Census, don't keep these data as current as we'd like. Median household income in South Haven is a bit below, at least it was in 2018. So the 2017 median income was about 46,000, almost 52,000 in 2018, both below Van Buren County and below Michigan. Somewhat speaks to the affordability of people with earnings in to, in the city of South Haven to be able to afford housing, noticing that earlier that it was 206,000 was the average or the median income, or it was the median home, median home price. We look at poverty rates and total poverty. South Haven actually does fairly well on total poverty, at a couple points below both Michigan and the rest of Van Buren County. But in child poverty, they're kind of right there with the rest of Van Buren and well above by a couple points the state of Michigan. When we look at median house prices, again, we talked about in 2018, it was about 206,000. Coming out of the recession, we did see a dip there, but the long run, median house prices in South Haven in the red are significantly above the rest of Van Buren County, which may explain some of the outcommuting or out movement, outmigration. And then, again, above, well above both Van Buren County and the rest of Michigan. This is something we watch pretty closely, the percent of homeowners paying 35% or more of their household income. And pretty much, we're starting to see that that price appreciation is probably affecting, given that we had, we see lower incomes on the median and higher, excuse me, higher housing prices, probably in 2018 is the thing that affects that differential. In 2010, it was pretty similar between South Haven and Michigan, and then over time, it really has increased to one in four people in, are paying, paying significant amount, paying 35% of their household income for housing in South Haven. Very similar to renting, renters in South Haven, a little bit better, a higher percentage, but in some ways in 2018 at least, better than the, better than the rest of the state. So what were our recommendations? We debated these a lot. Would I make all of these today? I probably wouldn't. We combined our findings with the work that Jim Hettinger and Patricia Mullen did, and that's the increased employment opportunities. We suggested job opportunity networks and linking residents to jobs. Some, you know, the best way to hire people is to know somebody, and those job networks really work. Community education strategy, promote lifelong learning and skill development. I think this is increasingly important as we look at this. We see the rise of middle-skilled jobs as we look at onshoring and nearshoring of firms into the region, and I think that's a real opportunity for South Haven, is that those jobs are going to require more skills, that you're, you know, it's going to need that CTE, career technical education, it's going to need certifications and other things. And so promoting that, and again, see Jim and Patricia's report, I think they do a nice job of outlining it, but I think it's increasingly necessary to be competitive in a global economy, particularly as that economy looks to try to come back to North America. Create an anywhere strategy, which we now call remote work. So those guys were prescient, as I guess so were we. Yeah, you should really think about this because people want to want to live in a place that has great amenities. Quality internet is incredibly important, and we've talked with Kate and the mayor about this extensively. And we see this as an issue across, across particularly rural Michigan, not only for kids to be able to learn, but people be able to work from home. One of the things that I wouldn't recommend is today is doing more office space. I don't think that's necessary. I think people are getting away from office space. We see large firms divesting of theirs, and so I'm less excited about that. And, you know, understanding your regulations on home-based businesses where people can come to that business, you know, I don't think you're probably intruding a great deal on, you know, if I moved here and ran my business from my home, but, you know, that was one thing we recommended. Foster Industries that provide year-round employment, as I mentioned, we're working in Clare with my Michigan health. Healthcare, you know, it's hard to grow in a more rural place, it's hard to increase the portfolio. We understand that. Everybody wants to have surgery and have, you know, maternity services and others. It's just incredibly difficult. Manufacturing, on the other hand, is on the rise. It is not the panacea for all jobs that it was, you know, 10 years ago, 15 years ago, 20 years ago. Again, the workers are getting paid better, but they're often using technology in different ways, and so it needs to, going back to that lifelong learning thing, I think is really important. We recommended tightening regulations on STRs and limiting the locations of STRs. Update zoning on single-family housing. I think that's kind of been the mantra everywhere we've worked, from Kalamazoo and on, to understanding that sometimes lot sizes are too big for the types of homes. And, you know, we've gone through the tiny home and on and on, but, you know, how duplexes fit on places and lot sizes and other things. And develop, and really our last recommendation, I believe, was to develop an economic and community health dashboard, monitor what's going on on these, for these sorts of things on a regular basis. So one final thought, I think it's really important to beware the trap of linear thinking where we are today, and the current trends don't necessarily lead to tomorrow. So when we did this report, you know, this is, those were, was our best thinking at the time. Is it, would I, again, agree with everything? Some of my colleagues that you saw earlier may, some of us not. We probably would have more heated debates around that today. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sir?
I have some questions.
Yeah, go ahead. Ask away. The wife's here.
What we're looking for from this report is our current state of affairs, which it was.
Which it was two years ago, state of current affairs. But more importantly, predictions of where we're going and what could But more importantly, predictions of where we're going and what could happen to the city. So I took your executive summary, and I took notes on it. And I want to play back your, you, when I say you, the report, the exact words from the report. A community's economic and community development efforts should be focused on increasing the income and wealth of its residents, most importantly. Next point. One of the greatest challenges in maintaining its population base will be balancing the competing demands for seasonal and year-round housing. Next point, and this is highlighted in your report. In short, the greatest challenge facing South Haven is not to become solely a beach town. You can stop me anywhere and comment.
Well, if we go back and we look at your employment, you're not a beach town. I mean, you do many things here, but that was kind of my point in this exam, examination, is that, you know, twenty percent of your employment is in manufacturing. That's probably far above, I would guess, and I'm making a number up, but bear with me, probably nationally, that's thirteen percent. So, you know, I think you've got a portfolio here, and I think the issue is maintaining that portfolio and in keeping that going. And the other thing I would suggest is that probably what we should have said there was residents and businesses, because businesses in a TIBU model, for those of you who are public administrators, he's the guy that votes with your feet. I would suggest that you have to recognize, even though businesses don't vote you into office, they do vote with the things that this gentleman, oh, he left. This gentleman talked about, which is tax base and other things. So I'm not sure I answered your question, but I think a portfolio is really important. And you've got some great development out, and I don't know the terms exactly, but behind Menards and all that sort of thing. There's a lot of, you know, a lot of that manufacturing going there that provides year-round decent-paying jobs, my guess is. Sorry.
But going back to your statement in the report, it says the greatest challenge facing South Haven is not to become a beach town. Then it says this would limit the growth potential of its residents, and remember, residents are the number-one focus, and generate a greater demand for seasonal housing and city services. A higher portion of jobs would become seasonal, low-paying service jobs. Year-round residents would be struggling in the winter months to live here. Then you say later in the report, and the number is not exactly right, but you said six-hundred-and-twenty-three short-term rentals in the city. Fifty percent of these units are owned by residents outside the city. So the conclusion, some people, including myself, withdraw, we're trying to create economic development for the residents here, and yet, half of the housing is now going to people that don't even live here with short-term rentals. So that's got to have a major impact. And then you say here, we have to be careful not to become a beach town. Then it says here, and you're right, it says the primary focus for the city's economic development and community efforts should be in building economic opportunities for businesses and residents. So if you see our population decreasing, if you see the number of short-term rentals increasing, and they're largely fifty percent owned by people that don't even live here, it seems like we're drawing a conclusion that we are, in fact, becoming more dependent on becoming a beach town. Now, I'm not asking you to comment necessarily on that, but I am asking you to say, that's what you have in here, and that's what you've implied, that the concern is we're becoming a beach town.
So let, let me, Kate, correct me where I'm wrong. I think you have, what, twenty-five hundred or three thousand residential properties in the city. Is that correct?
We have over thirty-five hundred.
So you've got thirty-five hundred. So at six hundred, STRs, sorry, I'm not an accountant, I'm an economist, so I only estimate things. What's that, twenty, twenty-five percent, say? Maybe not even that. The rest are either people who live here and work here on a full-time, year-round basis, or people who are snowbirds, who are here because of the amenities. And then third, there's the folks from Chicago, and my guess is if we look at those numbers through the pandemic, you have people who are second homes. And so that's all amenity-based, and the value of your homes, my guess is at two-hundred-and-six thousand, leading to lots of tax base, higher than both Michigan on average and the rest of Van Buren County, are because of the price push from those housing demands from three, at least three of those groups, to because of the amenities of being a place with a great, as the commissioner said, one of fifty great places in America.
One of fifteen.
So I think there's more to that story than we probably told.
Then it says in your report, it is possible that a more restrictive policy on STRs will have a negative impact on the area's tourism. However, it is likely will be very marginal. So we could restrict short-term rentals, and it will not hurt the economic growth of this town, is what is said in this report. And then, like I said, you said fifty percent of the people that own the rentals that people can't live in, that decreases the stock, raises the price of homes, aren't even owned by people who live in this town. So I guess I'm trying to take what was said in this report and use it to create goals and policies for our city. And everything here is pointing to, number one, our number-one goal should be take care of the residents. Number two, too much property in this town is owned by people that don't live here, and it's decreasing the available homes. Prices are going up, and the jobs that are left are lower-paying. It's the same thing everyone has talked about, and it's right here in this report.
Well, let me just take issue with all the jobs that are here are lower-paying.
I didn't say all. I said a lot of the jobs.
Well, I, that sounds like a proportionality question, and I'm not sure that that's correct. And again, this is actually, the STRs are actually a small portion of the total properties in the city. Six hundred of thirty, at that point, and now I believe the target that we were looking, using is, I don't know, five hundred. So five hundred of thirty-five hundred, one-seventh. Again, I, I would argue that we're, if we were writing this today, we might have discussed it a little differently, not for any other reason, then it's a different time. I can only take from what you wrote.
I, go ahead.
I was just going to say, and I do think, I mean, obviously for, maybe we'll get a little more, so your next one, I don't want to do that. But I do think it's important that we account for all the housing types, like you said. I mean, there are rentals, there are seasonal, and there are vacation. I mean, they're, they're all part of that larger mix that, that's just part of the understanding we're trying to get to as we make decisions. So I'll just leave it with that. So, any more question? Or I can ask some public questions, too?
Um, I guess, I'm just wondering, like, there are diverse jobs available, but if the people who work here can't afford to live here anymore, is that sustainable for our future, like, population-wise? If that makes sense.
No, no, I'm trying to, let me frame the answer. I think that's a problem in, that not only you face. So if you look at the demand for housing in downtown Kalamazoo, and so when I was, you know, down there, really, all the new housing there was not affordable housing. It wasn't workforce housing. It was fourteen, fifteen, sixteen hundred dollars a month, and that was, you know, four or five years ago. I think this is the challenge, is that you, it's very hard to build affordable housing in this, in this day and age, that what, you know, used to be a hundred dollars a square foot to build is now two hundred dollars a square foot, that expectations are HDTV types of things. And I think that you, as an amenity-rich town, however you want to look at it, whether it's, for whatever reason, it's an amenity-rich town, it's, prices are going to go up. I interviewed for a job almost thirty years ago, and the guy that I was talking with in eastern Oregon had been the economic development director in Aspen. And he had to drive forty-five minutes because thirty years earlier from now, he could not afford to live in Aspen because it was an amenity-rich town. I think that's, that's probably endemic to what's happening. I don't have a good solution to that because home sales are a market-rate activity, and people will bid up. You know, when I bought my last home, we said, you're not going to have an open house tomorrow. Either take our offer by eleven o'clock and don't have an open house, or we're out. You know, because we didn't want competition, you know? I, I think it's unfortunate, but I think that's the nature of market-rate places. When you have particularly, within a two-hour drive, you've got Chicago with people with serious dollars that can come and be second homeowners and others. And I think that's the challenge, as we talk to communities as part of this report, in many places. This was a challenge of beach communities and, you know, across the country, Delaware and in North Carolina, and snow, sorts of places, too. I think it's a challenge.
Thank you.
Very good. Trying to do some, let's hear what the public questions are. We can just get through those, and then, how's that sound? So maybe, do you want to have a seat? I mean, I.
I'm happy to.
Thank you. You get to rest, and then if there's, you know, public question, just maybe come up and state your questions, and then.
We'll just leave it on green.
Maybe just state your name and address. If you've got a question, then you can answer while he's here, and if there's none, we'll let him go home. So, going once, going twice.
Dan Agnello, nine sixty-four Everett Parkway. I'd like to, I don't have a question, but I'd like to emphasize what Councilman Reeser said, the fifty percent non-resident ownership. There are eight rentals in my COA. There's eighteen houses, condos, whatever. Do the math, that's forty-five percent. One, one house is owned by somebody who lives in Colorado. One house is owned by someone that lives in Duette, Michigan. Guess where the other ones live? Illinois. Six out of eight live in Illinois, and, and the report shows fifty percent. Okay? And the latest number on building houses right now, as of a week or two ago, is three-hundred-and-seventy dollars per square foot. Some friends of mine bought a lot around the corner, five or six months ago, they ready to build. I got four or five builders, three-hundred-and-seventy. They can't afford to build their house right now, so they don't know what they're going to do. So the fact that we have all these STRs and we have all our affluent money coming into the town is just driving, the number that, for median price of houses, now, I think the last time I saw in the paper was three-fifty-three or something like that. You know, it's ridiculous. So it's, it's driving, now, the wages haven't gone up anywhere as fast as what the price of houses are. I mean, it's, it's unbelievable. My neighbor on the corner bought his house for four-twenty, owned it eighteen months, and he sold it for six-forty. I mean, it's unbelievable. It's crazy. So we, we still got to do something with STRs. And we got to do something, we've been sitting around for two years, we're going through two cycles, and nothing's happening. Just study, 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 kicking a can down the road. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else with a question for Mr. Robey?
Joe Wilkins, eight-eleven Indiana Street. I just have one question. You, in the report, it stated that one of the recommendations was to put a limit restriction on STRs. Would that be your recommendation today?
I think it was, actually, I think the recommendation was a spatial recommendation to limit where they could be.
There was two, you had two line items there. One, restriction on.
I think it was a sub-bullet, so, but let me get to it if I could.
Tighten regulations on STRs, okay? And then limit locations. Would those be, would those two items be your recommendation today?
I think you have tightened regulations on STRs. I think you now have, as I would understand it, there's a permitting process and, and other things, so that may be. I think limiting locations would be very difficult because it is a market-rate activity. And I'm not a lawyer, but I think it would be difficult to now sort of red-line it. That might have been something way in the past you might have done. I think it would be hard to do that, and this is one that we argued a lot about, but we put in the report. I'll be honest with you.
So would you stand by those two today?
I don't think you can limit the location thing, so I probably would step back from
No falling.
Mike Neese, I reside at five-oh-nine Fruit Street in South Haven. Jim, first of all, thanks to the institute for the fine work. It's, it's very welcome to receive database-driven research rather than Callahan opinion surveys, which we have relied on heavily in making policy. I do have four questions. One, I'm concerned about, because I know you're also going to look at the economic impact of STRs on the city, actually on the region, I believe is the way you put it. And yet, I hear you're having difficulty isolating city data from the broader county data. And the question we need answered in economic impact is, how does STRs impact the residents that make their permanent homes in wards one, two, and three? That's our, that's what we're interested in finding out as residents. Not how it's impacting the county, not how it's impacting the region, but as you pointed out in the introduction and the, in the executive overview, it's about the impact on the economic well-being of the residents. So my concern is, how do you propose to isolate the city daddy, data on weekly wages? I might disagree with you a bit on the statement that our wages may be higher than what we think, because that leads to my second question, our out-migration to the rural areas. Have you determined a, any causal factors from that? I'm going to suggest one, that people are moving to the rural areas because they can no longer afford to live in the city.
Yeah, and Mike, I just want to make sure, because he's not going into the impact study tonight, that's.
No, 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 I'm not. This is, this is for.
This is perfect. I just want to make sure he wasn't going forward.
So, second question, no, I, we just look, in this case, we look at the data, I would suspect that, you know, opportunity and cost may be a factor. Yeah, I don't.
Third question. This is a difficult one, Jim. Again, we have a concern as residents over the loss of our social capital. Now, you know what I do for a living, I know what you do for a living. I have the same problem with my clients trying to measure the worth of human capital. It's easy to value a machine. It's not so easy to value an employee. It's easy to value, to value property assessments and tax bases. It's much harder to measure the social capital of not knowing your neighbors, of not having sidewalks cleaned because there's nobody there that lives there this time of year. All the things that we care about in terms of the social fabric on why we choose to live here, not visit here, choose to live here. So have you thought about ways we might come up with a figure or a, a value equivalence around the social capital issues that I think you'll find prevalent in residents' concerns? And lastly, again, this is a community health report. By the way, it's, I wish George was here, you know that. I started getting interested in our community health reports when I discovered the first one, and I know we had one back in eighty-two as well, but the first one I studied was nineteen ninety-six. And I think if we look back at the findings in nineteen ninety-six, we would be well-positioned or well, the advice would be pay attention to this one that was done in twenty-twenty, because it's like George and the group had a crystal ball in nineteen ninety-six. Much of their predictions have come true, and yours may as well. So here's my last question. If we do say the primary target of this body of, this body of government should be improving the livelihood of its current residents, how do we measure what benefit there is to residents of wards one, two, and three? Those are the metrics we need. Explain to the people who live here, what are the benefits? We know, we hear numbers like, oh, we made a hundred-and-fourteen, a hundred-and-fourteen million dollars in tourism. That's wonderful. Break that down for it. How much of that stayed in the city? We also know from your report that seventy-six percent of the employees lived out of town. So take that hundred-and-fourteen million, seventy-six percent of that payroll left. It didn't stay here. So how do you propose, as we move forward and take a look at economic issues? So how do you propose, as we move forward and take a look at economic issues and city policymaking, what mechanism can we put in place to measure the dollar benefit to those people who live in wards one, two, and three? Separate from, this is not a regional council. That's the report we need.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Anybody else with any questions for Mr. Robey?
Pat Cass in ninety-seventh Superior Street. I think it's a wonderful, and like you've been going through the twenty, twenty report, and I'll be anxious to see that, I guess it'd be the twenty twenty-two report or twenty twenty-three, right? Because I don't know what it is.
It, it's-
Yeah, anyway. It's, it is all very interesting, and I, I agree with everybody, social capital and neighbors and what does it mean to live here. And someone said at one of these meetings, one of the problems is, we don't know what we don't know. And so we don't know how many people looked to move here and decided not to because the neighborhoods are in shambles. We don't know how many companies looked to move here or to put their company here, but they decided not to because their employees wouldn't want to live in a beach town. How many, uh, I mean, how many people who live here now regret moving here because of what's happened to this community? So, I mean, I, I don't know how we answer the questions of what we don't know. But, I mean, that, I think ask around, see, see how people feel. We don't know about that employer that, you know, gee, I don't know, my employees, it's expensive, my employees don't want to live here, there's no neighborhoods, the schools are declining. You know, there's also an opportunity here, and I think even more so than twenty twenty, for this, um, to really push this work at home, live in a wonderful place where you could walk down and see the lake in the morning and go home and have breakfast with your kids and live a wonderful life in a beautiful place. That's, I'd like to see one of those billboards down on one ninety-six that say, come to the beach. I want to see one and say, come and live here. Come and live here. That would be wonderful. But again, I, I personally know people that are moving out of town. I personally, I'll say that, I've said it before, I regret moving here. And this was my dream. But it's, it's just a different place today. So I, I don't know how many, and many of us are older, so we'll be gone, so maybe you don't have to worry about that. But it, it's a challenge to try and figure out a really wise way to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Veenstra, twelve twenty Monroe Boulevard. I wanted to clarify one point. I, I believe the fifty percent of owners of STRs live outside of the state, don't they? Is it, wasn't that in the report?
I believe that's what we reported.
Okay. So an even larger percentage live outside of the city. You happen to know what that is offhand, but presumably that would be a much smaller number.
I think that's a number that we're looking at in the next report, so much more current of where the STR permits are and where the owners are.
Okay. So then to piggyback on Michael Neese's point, those owners, the STRs that don't live in the city, that money is flowing out of the region.
Do you mind if I-
Go ahead.
I, I would be careful in that assumption. Some money may be flowing out of the region, and I would guess-
Out a hundred percent of it.
I would say that's profit, because one thing that we're looking at is, if you're, if you're running an STR here, or you're a second homeowner, or you're a snowbird, you're still having maintenance done, you're having garbage, water, sewer, you know, you're buying things to put in, you're painting, you're doing maintenance and other things. And so, you know, there is some part of that that may be flowing out, but I wouldn't look at, you know, every four hundred dollar night goes to Chicago, every four hundred dollar night. There's some portion of it, you know, I mean, there's ta- retain taxes and other things that, that, that provide services here. So there is something there, but I don't know what the return on investment on something like that is. Maybe somebody here does.
And also some of those people that are working for the STRs and, and doing that maintenance and so on don't live in the city.
I don't have privy to those records. Unfortunately, in Michigan, they don't collect a local wage tax, so we can't go to Kate and say, okay, tell us where all the people who are paying taxes in the city don't.
But, but they do. I mean, I, I've, I've seen that, I've seen that with, you know, from firsthand knowledge that, you know, not everyone that is working and doing business with an STR lives in the city.
And, and I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm saying, I don't know-
Right.
You know, that's my, it's an evidence-based thing. I, I don't have-
Okay.
I, I think you're probably right, but at the same time, I, I can't say whether it's ten percent or ninety percent.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody, a couple more questions?
Hi, Dave Tuttle, one sixteen Clinton. When we think about this report and we talk about South Haven, and this was particularly interesting to speak specifically with regard to ward one, two, and three versus the community of South Haven. And I would think that the community of South Haven is perhaps a little bit broader than the geographic footprint. Could you clarify here when you talk about, is this data specifically to within only the city limits and, or does it represent some portion of the broader community? So when we think about housing and if people live, say, north of Sleepy Hollow, which is outside of the city limits, but they work here, are those considered local workers or are they considered, how would they fall in, in affordable housing? Much of the housing is outside of Blue Star Highway is where there's lots of very nice communities being built now. And are those part of the, the housing opportunities within our community, or is that red-fenced because it's not in ward one, two, and three? And so it's not part of South Haven?
I want to be careful in answering this because I don't have all the data sources. So one of the data sources we use is American Community Survey. American Community Survey is census tract based, and there are two census tracts in the city of South Haven. And much of the data that you saw on poverty and other things, I believe, and, and I, I just don't want to promise you, came from American Community Survey for the study that we're doing now. We're using Claritas because they update the estimates better than, you, you saw that we did this report in twenty twenty and the data were from twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen. I'm almost certain those are ACS data. We're using more current data that are accepted by, and people are talking about employer, about people doing site selection. I do that for a living. And so we use those data. So most of the data that we, wherever we could, now if you saw Van Buren County, that might have been all, the only smallest we could drill down to. My guess is, is that for the most part, it was relating to particularly the economic conditions where possible. The two, the two census tracts, and I think that's true for the job postings and other things, because we can narrow that focus pretty closely. So great question, by the way, but as much as possible, we look in, in, in the study that we're working on now, will be very focused on the city of South Haven, not the regional question.
And so the community developments that are being done, and let's say the, the best development, recreational development that's been done out, out Phoenix, out that way, you know, that's been a huge complex and a lot of jobs and a lot of money that have gone into that. And that won't be reflected, even though they advertise and they pull dollars from South Haven to go there. Because it's outside of the footprint of ward one, two, and three, you would not consider that to be a South Haven business and part of our community then.
Right, because these folks don't represent either the residents, they, they represent residents and businesses within a very specific area.
And so when you think about the community, I didn't see anything to say, is, should the community consider expanding its footprint some, so that if the housing opportunities are going out of reach financially because there's no more land being made, obviously there's land that's available and there's housing opportunities on the fringes of the community. Should the community actually be expanding and saying, in order to have housing that's affordable and accessible within a five-minute or ten-minute drive, let's make those part of our community so we consider those people to be part of our town? Is that something that would be, should, should be considered and, or why not?
I probably don't have enough knowledge of that. So I, I don't know about, I, I, I probably can't give an, an opinion on that.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you. We do work closely with the township, so, all right. Anybody else?
Mary Hasley, seven twenty-six North Shore Drive. Going to kind of go off of what Pat had commented on. So she said, you know, we don't know what we don't know, but we do have hindsight, so we can maybe start looking at decisions that have been made and figuring out why, why did we make that and should we have made a different decision to help? A perfect example, and I know I shared this with you with the current survey, is in, I believe it was twenty sixteen, a pontoon manufacturing wanted to come in, would have paid excellent wages, but that building was sold for storage. So we lost that manufacturing. So is there a way to track what companies may have started a, a, a waltz with us and went elsewhere to help determine where we need to better focus and better parlay view with the potential employers? Because I think that that was, again, hindsight's much more twenty twenty, but we lost a lot of good manufacturing jobs on the south end of town. There's also, I know people come, get nice, well-paying jobs elsewhere and look here because it's a nice place to live, but they can't afford it, even with good jobs. They cannot afford it. I heard of someone who had a well-paying job and went to St. Joe because they could not afford housing here because of the price. We see increased manufacturing here, but what is their pay to their employees? And can that pay allow them to get a loan for the kind of home prices that are going, are being required here to buy? You know, are you able to track that and assess that? And especially like with the twenty sixteen, that would have been during this report. But I, I saw what manufacturing jobs were here, didn't see where opportunities had been lost or not captured. And most importantly, I mean, the housing price we've all re, all discussed depends on stock. And, you know, we supposedly have had a hundred new homes built since twenty twenty. Not sure exactly where they are. I think most of them were in the PUDs, but the PUDs are not capped. So all of them can be STRs. So you have competing interests for the new home constructions. And unfortunately, the PUDs that have been let go through have had the single-family homes versus the townhomes. And even if, and more recently, Trailside do, now does have townhomes. And that's supposed to lower the price, but if they can all be STRs, you have competing interests. And so you're not, you're not providing the inventory that we need to bring families here, because if they can all be STRs, that's going to increase the price. And it kind of defeats the whole purpose of the PUD to have average, you know, scaled prices. And so how can we address that? Thank you.
Guest, no question for that.
Mayor, do you want me to?
Take a shot if you want. There wasn't a question there, so I mean-
So, you know, I, I think you raise a, an important question. You know, I, I probably can't speak to the STRs, but I think it's important to remember a couple of things. One, the cost of building a home today far exceeds to the point of where we're at through, through everything. And two comments, I guess. One, your, your observation on the pontoon boat, folks. I've been doing economic development for close to thirty years. It's a very hard job, and most of the time you lose. And the fact that someone with private capital made a decision to turn their capital into a warehouse versus sell it or something, you know, some perceive that to be the conspiracy of capitalism, but in fact, it's the individual decisions. And, you know, I think that, that the other issue is in a many rich town, there will always be situations where the cost of housing, you know, will exceed many people's grasp. You know, I'm not sure how you do that in any situation other than it's a market rate situation. And historically, things like price ceilings have, i- i- when you see places like New York and others that have price ceilings, that you can't charge above a certain price. One, I think it's difficult to regulate, it's a little easier in renting, but the reality is, is then you get underperforming investment and people don't invest then. And so I think economic development's a hard job. Building properties and maintaining properties is increasingly, it's expensive. And, you know, I, I don't know how you regulate markets without negatively affecting them.
And I'll just say, I, the pontoon story, that's, it didn't happen while I was sitting up here, and I would just say that during the time, we have been very aggressive with economic development efforts. Our employers know we're there for them. We have, our job is to knock down doors and make it easier for them to do their work. So our businesses are expanding. We had a Gull Lake Marine, to name just a few. I mean, so, I mean, we have a very, you know, pro-business attitude in this community. And if someone shows up, we're here for them. And I don't know if you were here earlier, but my comment, but, you know, as you know, retention is-
Retention is key.
Is huge. It's a lot harder to, you know, get a new job than it is to keep what's here. So you got to work hard to keep what you got, so.
If I can make an economic development observation, I've supported, if, if you've been to Firekeepers and driven into Marshall, there's all those cornfields over there. I've supported, that's, that's the premier mega site in Michigan. I've supported work there and nothing has happened there, although I always hear there's things. If you've been ever in Van Wert, Ohio, if you've driven down from Fort Wayne on thirty, there's a mega site there. In the last year, I've been there six times, supporting large projects from eight hundred to fourteen thousand jobs. It's just difficult. It's a difficult, difficult business, whether it's the mayor, it's the city manager, it's Jim Hettinger, whoever else. It's a very difficult business. It's very competitive and most of the time you lose.
All right. Anybody else with a question for Jim? Otherwise, we will roll on.
Mayor, council, city manager, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thanks for your time. See you in a few weeks. All right. Let's see if we can get one or two more things done before we take a break. How's that sound? All right. All good stuff. All right. What's that?
Item ten.
Item ten, yep. City council, we asked to approve and accept a donation request from Shout for South Haven.
I'll make a motion to approve the, the donation request from Shout for South Haven. Second.
We've got a motion, we've got a second. And I know Griffin is going to fill us in. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I, I know we have a, a pretty busy agenda tonight, so I'm going to do my best to be brief. But if there are any questions or if I missed anything you want to go in more detail on, I'm, I'm happy to do so. So this evening, I'm really excited to bring to you all a donation request from Shout for South Haven, a local nonprofit organization with a history of advancing a number of public improvement towns, or public improvement projects in town. I think many of you are familiar with their projects, everything from the donation of the historic clocks in, in two of our parks, the, the antique type light fixtures at our beaches, as well as they contribute to the annual decoration, both in the summer and the winter, of the Dykman Bridge. So with that, Shout, this evening, would like for you all to consider a donation request of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to transform Dykman Park into a Four Seasons gathering place. This would include installing an outdoor fireplace feature and gathering space for all to enjoy. This a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar donation was made up of funds from a number of different sources, a grant from the MEDC, a local match. I know many of you are familiar with the fundraising effort that was done late in twenty twenty-two, as well as a generous twenty-five thousand dollar direct donation from the Shout organization themselves. So with this donation, they are excited that the hundred and fifteen thousand dollars is available to cover the full construction costs associated with this project, the purchase and the installation of the equipment, the construction management costs, as well as the ever-important donor recognition for all of those that contributed to help make this project happen. With that, the donation policy was also considered that requires donors to have a plan and to work with the city for the ongoing operation and maintenance of this donation. On January fourteenth, excuse me, January fourth, the DDA board approved a motion to add a line item to its annual budget to- to support this project, as well as this project was brought to the Parks Commission last week. So both the DDA and the Parks Commission approved motions to recommend that City Council approve and accept this project. And last and not least, also have a note in the staff report just to highlight that, you know, it's my opinion and my professional recommendation that this project also coincides with advancing one of City Council's fiscal year priorities, number five, sustainability and sewership, associated with seeking grants to maximize the use of local funds to advance improvements in parks, public spaces, and community recreation projects. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions you may have. But I would also like to share that we do have the President of Shout, Mr. Bob Copping, as well as Tom Renner, the two inspirations for this project here. I think they'd like to make a few comments, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. We should give them the floor. So Bob Copping, Tom Renner, come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening, Bob.
I'll try to be mercifully brief.
You're fine. Thanks for all your hard work to get this here. So good evening.
I'm delighted to report that a new Shout-sponsored outdoor fireplace, where South Haven citizens can safely get together in the open air during our hearty Michigan Lakeshore winters, it has been professionally designed, cost estimated, and completely funded. Support for the fireplace has been overwhelming. More than 100 people from Michigan to Florida to Maryland enthusiastically contributed, more than 40,000. This $40,000, when added to a $40,000 matching grant from the state, which Griffin Graham arranged, and combined with $25,000 donated by Shout, with this, we have raised a total of 115,000, which is even more than 100,000 estimated cost. As always, Shout has shown great respect for preserving and enhancing the environment and the natural beauty. No trees will be removed, and the site landscaping will blend in with the present landscaping. Shout is proud of its long history of working with the city of South Haven on highly successful projects, starting with the Bronze Little Girl statue in front of City Hall, proceeding on to the antique-style street clock on the riverfront, the antique-style street clock in Dykman Car Park, the street lamps on the waterfront, the lovely drawbridge flowers, and many others. Shout will appreciate your support in our continuing efforts working to make a great community even better.
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate it. And again, thanks for your work. I agree. And good evening, Tom.
I really can't go beyond what Bob has said. It's been a real privilege for me to work with him and with the Shout organization to come before you tonight. You know, our URL for our website really says it all. Shout for South Haven. This is a citizen advocacy group. And if you know the history of Shout or would like to learn about it, I'll briefly tell you. More than 20 years ago, there were a group of Northside property owners who had some real questions of whether or not, how equitable their property taxes were. Bob did an extensive study and came back and told the folks, you better be quiet because you're in pretty good, South Haven street and you're pretty well. From that has grown Shout. And there are just so many wonderful examples of what Shout has done for our town. Our theme is working to make a great community even better. And we love to use a Ralph Waldo Emerson quote. Do not go where the path may lead. Go instead where there is no path and leave a trail. And if you look at each of the projects we've done over the years, that is just so very, very fitting. Gail kind of stole my thunder in her presentation because I was going to announce, if you weren't already aware. Last week, World Atlas, which is a large publishing, national publishing outfit, named South Haven one of the most beautiful towns in the United States. And they only selected 15 towns from our entire country. I'd like to thank some of the things that Shout has done to earn that kind of recognition is there. Quickly, this is what they said. This southwest Michigan beach town, don't like the word beach town apparently some, more than holds its own against a slew of other Lake Michigan gems. First and foremost, South Haven has an excellent waterfront with long sandy stretches subdivided by the South Haven Pier, which itself is complete with a postcard-perfect bright red lighthouse. Aside from the scenic shoreline, South Haven also has a well-stocked, pedestrian-friendly downtown core and a wealth of nearby in-the-lakes and nature trails to explore. It's our hope that this project, which we're calling Four Seasons at Dykman, becomes another jewel in this beautiful town. In closing, I just would like to acknowledge, on behalf of Shout and Bob and myself, the commitment of city staff to this project and other Shout projects over the years. Most notably, we're appreciative of Griffin for his steadfast support in making our vision tonight's reality. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it. All right. Would you ever like to see if there are any public questions or comments first? Let's do that. Any public questions or comments on this gift before we go on?
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. I would like to thank that these have, this has now gone before the Parks Commission, which approved it and welcomed my request for transparency and commented on whether they had supported this financially. And I think it's more important with the City Council with a gift, especially when there's recognition availability. And we've heard that they're, part of the donation is going for recognition, especially with compliance with our own right code, that the City Council shall determine its own organizational rules and order of business subject to the following provisions. No member of the council shall vote on any question in which they have a financial interest other than common public interest. The financial interest is because of the naming opportunities, which is a great way to raise money, and they've done a great job. But if any City Council person has donated enough for a recognition that I think should be stated on the record. But of course, common public support would not affect any decision, and it's great that you've done that. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Was there anybody else? No. Council.
I have a question. What will be the ongoing maintenance cost per year? Do you know that?
We've predicted based on communicating with other communities that have similar features, costs between $8,000 and $5,000 a year.
Okay. Awesome. And then, do you know, like, the, I don't know, like, environmental soundness of operating it?
I know that it is similar to what other communities are doing with similar features. I don't know if I could speak to it more than, more than that. I mean, it's contemplated, or the plan is that it'll be burning natural gas.
Okay. And will it be pretty constant? Or will there be like an off-on button for when it's not, you know, when nobody's using it?
Yeah. It's not going to be running all the time. So, you know, an example I have is, you know, we don't have the specifics for our feature yet because obviously, we don't have it built yet, and that's something we'll be able to work on. But I know the city of Holland runs theirs for a certain time during the day when it's below 60 degrees. So there are restrictions that are put in place for when it's operating.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I love them, like, the one in Holland and the one in Zeele. My family was just gathered around and had a winter picnic out there, and it was nice. So I think it'll be a really good addition to South Haven.
I agree. Again, I think it's a fantastic gift to the community. And I thank both of you. And if you're curious, we had contemplated fire features in that park space before. Not quite as nice by any stretch of the imagination. So this far exceeds what we would have ever contemplated. So, and really, this is just such a great example of a community collaboration, private-public, you know, coming together, raising those funds. I appreciate it. You know, we are just so fortunate as a community to have individuals such as this, organizations such as Shout, Rotary, Kiwanis-Shoe, name them, that come together, see a community need, a benefit, and, you know, help make it happen. So I am in full support. And we'll seek a motion to approve it.
Didn't we?
Oh, we got it, don't we?
Yeah.
We've got a motion. We have a second. Skip that. All right. We've got a motion. We've got a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post no. It is approved. Thank you very much, again, gentlemen. So, do you want to do a recess?
I make a motion. We take a five-minute recess.
Second.
Motion second, take a five-minute recess. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. See you in a minute. Motion second, go back into open session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We're back in open session. All right, everybody. We're going. Next. All right. Let's take these as one. We could discuss them. City Council, we ask to consider the approval of the following commercial use license agreements. We have barefoot weddings, as well as daydream, or sorry, dream day weddings.
I make a motion to approve the commercial use license agreement for barefoot weddings and dream day weddings.
Second.
All right. We've got a motion, a second. Kate, you want to just walk us through what's new, what's different?
Yes. So we have the two wedding vendors that are coming back to City Council for a one-year commercial vending agreement. What we did is, we did increase their fees 5%, which is pretty common, what we do with other vending, is we have those increases per year. So their annual $150 will be moved up, as well as each, $100 for each wedding will be increased to $105. And they will be located in both the same places that they were last year, which is the south end of the north beach.
Kate, I recognize barefoot weddings. Did we also work with dream day weddings last year?
You did.
Okay. And then, did, last year was kind of the trial period. Did the staff note any problems, any concerns? Did we get any complaints from the public? Did?
I did not receive any complaints about the weddings. We did have one instance when the yoga moved without getting permission or moved to another park, which they were not able to move to at that time. But I did not receive any complaints about the weddings themselves.
Okay.
All right. Are there any public questions or comments about this item? All right. See none. Council questions on this one? Nothing. All right. We've got a motion, we've got a second to approve the commercial use agreements for barefoot weddings and dream day weddings. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post no, it's approved. Next, City Council, we ask to adopt Resolution 2023-02, which is a resolution of necessity to authorize a city to acquire an easement for existing electric utility infrastructure located in South Haven Charter Township.
Make motion to adopt Resolution 2023-02, a resolution of necessity to authorize a city to acquire an easement for existing electrical utility infrastructures located in the South Haven Charter Township.
Second.
Motion second. Phil Hunter. Good evening. An interesting one with this one.
Thank you, Your Honor, City Council. Before, City-
Thank you, Your Honor, City Council. Before City Council, of course, as you just stated, is an easement of necessity. We're looking for a necessity, a resolution from City Council is a necessity to acquire a utility easement by eminent domain. I know that word sometimes scares people, eminent domain, and it's usually they go, my gosh, what happens? But if you actually read through the report, you'll actually see where, for example, eminent domain doesn't mean actually we get it for free. It means there's a judge actually stating both parties are usually at an impasse. We have, I've had three communications with the property owners, both offering the $12,915, which is, I believe, above fair market value. I actually took the market value from 12th Street that AEP actually gave, actually purchased the easement from us, and that was actually buildable property. This property, the easement that I'm talking about here, the 12-foot aerial easement, which is 2.31 acres, is set back and not buildable. But I thought it was, I wanted it to be something more than fair. But in the three communications, nothing's been, nothing has been actually in the contents of the letter been, well, this is what we would like to see. It was, let's just say, there was counteroffers, but nothing actually the city could accept. So we're at an impasse. So that's unfortunately, this is what the result of it is. And there is actually 12 steps that was set up by the city attorney, and here's the 12 steps that we have to abide by before this actually comes to a conclusion. So the City Council have any questions on the resolution, or... Again, the bottom line is, is we're going to be paying for it. It just has to be a judge that has to come in and do it, unfortunately. I would be happy if he came in tomorrow and said yes, then this would, that's actually more money than I want to spend with attorney fees as well. But unfortunately, this came to this.
Yeah, utilities cross property. That's reality. So we try. We try.
We did actually also try to move it. I was in the process of moving the utility. I was just saying, well, let's just move it out. And then we were stopped by the property owner. So now we're at a physical impasse. I can't do anything.
Well, we tried. So, okay. We've got a motion, we've got a second. Any public questions on this? Counsel? Sounds like you got a plan. Glad you're on. We've got a motion, we've got a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Get her done. Thank you. I know. City Council, we ask to receive an update regarding the safety concerns at the intersection of Phoenix and Blue Star Highway and the Phoenix Street Corridor, and consider Resolution 2022-03, which is a resolution authorizing the Michigan Department of Transportation to conduct a speed study on the Phoenix Corridor.
Make a motion to pass Resolution 2023-03, a resolution authorizing the Michigan Department of Transportation to conduct a speed study on Phoenix Street Corridor, on the Phoenix Corridor.
Second.
Motion and a second. Bill?
I presented to City Council back in our September 5 meeting. I was relaying concerns that we've received over the years on the intersection of Blue Star and Phoenix, as well as the light actually at Myers. Some of their concerns were the need for a dedicated, actually, left turn lane. Now, MDOT did communicate back to us on October 24th that they're already looking at studies. They already, they're going to proceed actually with the study at the Myers intersection, but they've already been, they're already conducting a study actually for the Phoenix and Blue Star. So whatever I do here back from them, I'll of course relay to City Council. Now, in front of City Council is a resolution, and you'll notice actually that DPW is not recommending this, and I'm going to tell you really frankly why. There is no geometry that's going to restrict lowering the speed, meaning actually there's not enough access points, there's not any curves. So when they say, and be very careful with the language that they're saying in there, that us passing this resolution, we're going to abide by whatever they come up with, which is the 85th percentile. So unlike what we have as a road authority ourselves when we did the baseline studies, theoretically, I could have raised that to 40 miles an hour. It came back at 39.5 three times. If this comes in higher than five, they're going to raise it. And I'm telling you, it's going to come in higher. I'm not a betting man, but this is not a percentage I would, I think, actually, I don't think this was the intent. I think you guys wanted to look at something or the possibility of something lowering it, not raising it. So I can't in good faith recommend this, but I do leave it in front of City Council. If you guys want to proceed with this, then by all means, let's do so. But I just want you to, I always try to manage expectations. So if it comes back, it's not our road. We can pass some resolutions saying we disagree. It's not our road.
Bill, what intersection is it?
This is actually for the full corridor, the speed study. This is actually on Phoenix from LaGrange all the way to 73rd. So if they do a speed study, and we have it set up at 35 miles per hour and 40 at certain sections, it could go up to 40 and 45.
Okay.
If the 85th percentile comes in that way.
Or 50.
Or 50.
Okay.
Whatever the 85th percentile, because there's not enough access points. That's one of the restrictions. If you get access points for so many miles, I believe it's actually 40, we don't have that per mile.
Okay.
And we don't have any dangerous turns. The geometry isn't there. So it's a straight shot.
What about, the bridge doesn't count?
No. They could possibly, but what I'm saying is, I do not recommend you passing this resolution, because I do fear you're not going to get what you expect.
And Bill, we got here, though, because people have asked, or shared their concerns about the safety at Blue Star and Phoenix, that intersection. And like you mentioned, some people would like to see a left turn lane or left turn light. But this is, the public has asked us to take a look at this.
And I don't, I think the public has asked us. We have feedback. However, even our crash history doesn't really show there's that an issue. So this is a big gamble. It's a big gamble, and I believe it's a gamble we might regret later on as a community.
Bill, are there two different actions that can be asked of MDOT? One is that at the intersection of Blue Star and Phoenix, can they add or look at adding a dedicated turn, left turn, versus, I think, what's being asked from MDOT's Coloma Business Office right now, which is doing the whole speed study? Those are two separate actions. Is that correct?
Yes, actually. They're already in the process of a warrant analysis for a dedicated left turn lane at LaGrange, I mean, at Blue Star in Phoenix. They're already in the process of that. They're going to look at the Meyer one. So that's a separate one here. Right now, in front of City Council, is the speed study. And looking at the language here, whatever we agree with tonight is what, I mean, whatever MDOT comes up with with their speed study is what we're going to end up getting.
Is there a risk by saying no to this, that they'll say, well, you need a left turn lane, you guys are...
Thanks, but no thanks. I'll report back to Gary. We took it in front of City Council, but City Council says, thanks, but no thanks. And they would be happy not to spend the money to have staff out there doing it.
Okay.
And I think that kind of goes back to one of the concerns we heard about the dedicated left turns. That's still in process with MDOT.
Okay. All right. Any questions there? I guess any public questions on this before we roll on?
I should also note that Bill and I have been on multiple communications with MDOT. There is a massive construction project coming to this area in the spring. I want to say maybe starting March, April, they will be rebuilding the intersection of Blue Star and Phoenix, as well as LaGrange and Broadway?
Yes, as well as LaGrange and Broadway. It's no earlier to start. Just looking at this up in the email, my apologies, Kate did go, and I completely, it's actually, they can't start no earlier than April 3, and the constable completion is June 20 of 2023. So there is, what they're talking about is, like Kate said, the intersection of Broadway and LaGrange, I'm sorry, of Phoenix and LaGrange. They'll be doing some spot repairs. So there'll be some lane closures, traffic control, and then they'll move on to Phoenix and Blue Star. And again, there'll be some traffic controls, some lane closures, doing some major spot repairs, then shift it over to, I think it's actually starting on the south side where it'll be open and switched on the north. And then, as Kate said, the ramps. So it's, it is a pretty extensive improvement and a lot of pavement pulling out, but we should see a pretty new intersection, which even after this is done, there's still enough lane width. So if they decide, or if they come to a conclusion with their warrants analysis that a dedicated left turn lane is, they don't need to reconstruct. So there's enough actually to restart, to readjust the striping. So thanks, Kate, for bringing that up.
Okay. All right. Someone understands now the question at hand, and we've got a motion, we've got a second. You want to just, at least roll call it to make sure it's clear who wants what. I think it'll be clear, but...
Onuki?
No.
Reeser?
No.
Sleeper?
No.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
No.
Smith?
No.
Motion fails.
And we fails. Very good. All right. City Council, we ask to consider the approval of Resolution 2023-04, which is a resolution to adopt the proposed 2023 to 2027 Parks and Recreation Master Plan in collaboration with the South Haven Area Recreation Authority and the South Haven Charter Township.
I make a motion to adopt the 2023 to 2027 Parks and Recreation Plan for submission to the Michigan Department of Natural Resources.
Second. Motion and a second. Bill, you're back.
Yes, that's me. I just stay here.
You're just, good.
Appreciate Kate putting these one after the others and get me, I appreciate that. Thank you, boss. In front of City Council today is a joint plan with the South Haven Charter Township and the South Haven Recreation Authority. Parks plans are every five years. It used to be not every community had a parks plan. It was kind of hit or miss, as you will. But the state of Michigan, I want to say it was maybe five years ago, made it a requirement for any grant funding, you have to have an up-to-date Parks Master Plan. So now everybody's, well, majority of everybody has one unless you're a community that doesn't apply for grants. So ours is expiring, and ours is due to be submitted into system deadline is March of 2023. So we are on schedule. The current plan in front of City Council was already approved by the South Haven Township meeting. They had a public hearing, and they did approve it, as well as the Recreation Authority. It was very extensive public outreach. It started in July of this year with many open, many public houses, many surveys online. But I do believe the plan in front of you is a good roadmap for the next five years for the city of South Haven. And I'm here to answer any questions the council may have on this plan.
Any council questions on this one?
Let me see.
How about I'll offer any public questions on this one? Any pickleballers here?
Hi, Dave Tuttle, 116 Clinton. I guess I would just offer an objection to a piece within the plan here. It's just that one of the action items here for, is essentially number nine under generate revenue. It specifically calls out to increase taxes, both to do additional general obligation bonds and to increase millages. And those would be to, obviously to support additional programs and to hire additional people for the Parks community. But I feel as a taxpayer, I must object, record an objection to the broad increasing of taxes.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. I'll just say, if you haven't read the plan, I would encourage you to, because it is a well-done plan. It does a fantastic job of just cataloging our parks, our trails, all the amenities. And it's something you'd be proud of. If you're unfamiliar, you might find places you didn't even know existed within our community. So it's an impressive document, and well-done by all involved. So I mean, I will say, I give everybody credit for putting that together. So if you haven't sometime, if you're sitting around looking for something to do on one of these fantastic Michigan evenings, just pull that up and peruse through it. So, and I will say, we heard a lot from pickleballers looking for more amenities, and I joke, a lot of families looking for further support for, you know, rec fields, from T-ball to, you know, baseball, softball, soccer. We're seeing some of that investment by the schools, but ultimately, we're going to have to look at ways to maintain those facilities to, so we can continue to have attractive things for families, support our schools, and all that good stuff. So that's just going to have to be a discussion we have as a group for how we support those services, if we want to attract people to come into our community to do more than go to the lake, to be done. So on that note, we have, there's nothing else. Oh, yeah, go ahead. Sure.
I have a question for Bill. I wanted to know, is the tot lot on Cable Street, is that utilized? I mean, I never see any kids.
I'd have to ask staff, to be honest, to see what the cleanup would be like. That probably be, I'd have to have staff monitor. Maybe the only way to probably do that would be maybe garbage collection to see how much the usage is there would be a good thing.
Yeah, because I remember when it was actually, you know, erected, and that was some years ago. But I'm not that old, so. However, I remember when they put it there, and it wasn't used that much then. And certainly, I don't see any kids. And so I was just wondering why we put any money in there. It just seemed like we would take that money and put it into Elkenberg Park, because there's some other things I think that Elkenberg Park could use. I'm not on that committee, but I'm just saying, you know, I can see, you know, because I grew up, you know, going to Elkenberg Park, and there are some things that aren't there anymore. And I kind of wish that we put more money into Elkenberg Park versus into a park that's not being used.
Okay. I can have Erin, I can email them later on and see if through the summer, if we could kind of monitor and see what kind of data we can collect, and see if that, at least perspective, then we can start tracking that. It's a very good point.
That'd be good.
And just for the record, last comment for the city manager. Just in case we do get rid of that park, I hope that we would use that land for affordable housing.
Well, you got to watch out. Once it's in the parks, you got people that want dog parks and all sorts of things. You'll be hearing from them. So, just saying. Just letting you know. Once it's in the parks, it's tricky.
Noted.
I just wanted to say, living next to Hartman Park, I know, like in the plan, it says at Hartman School, there's a plan to put in some playground equipment, which would be awesome over by the school. But then later on in the park, it says it'd be great to have a tot lot. But the neighborhood has kind of always just loved it as the green space that it is, and kids still play there. And it is just amazing, as is. So I like the idea of having that playground equipment over by the school and the football field. Just wanted to note that.
Very good. Joe?
Yeah, I found it interesting. Every year, I look at Kiplinger Magazine, and they have this thing about the best places to retire or best places to live. I think it's two different issues. Every time you read about the best places to live in the United States, parks, recreation, and fun things to do are near the top of the list under medical. So it's a big thing when people consider living in a town. So I'm proud that we take care of our parks, and I would support anything to make our town, as Shout has done, more beautiful. And the other thing I wanted to say is I want to thank all the residents who volunteered to put flowers in different locations and have taken it under their own guiding hand to fix up the spot. I know on Monroe Boulevard, there's a little spot that you can look out, and I think that's taken care of by volunteers. So I think that's nice. And we had a resident sitting here, she looks like she left, that has taken the time to clear the sand off the blue steps on her own. So a lot of residents chip in to make the town look more beautiful, as well as our tax dollars.
Well-stated. All right. There's nothing else. We have a motion and a second to approve 2023 to 2027 Parks Plan, Resolution 2023-04. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post no. It's approved. Thank you much. All right. Thanks, Bill. And next, City Council will be asked to accept the 2023 Short Term Rental Snapshot Report. Maybe we'll hear and accept it later. I'll say so. Go ahead. Good evening, Griffin.
Good evening. It's time for the moment you've all been waiting for. I know we have lots of people here who have been waiting what is now several hours to see this report. I am pleased to share that, you know, our team put a lot of effort into this report this year, rewriting it substantially to try to make it clearer, easier to understand, and to include data that is helpful for those interested in this program. So I would just like to start by thanking all of those, you know, on our team that helped to make this possible. But with that being said, this is the annual Short Term Rental Snapshot Report that is... required by ordinance. On the, kind of the cover staff report memo, it does have a snapshot of the specific ordinance language that talks about specifically what is required to be included in this report. I can tell you that for the five or six years the report has been issued now, actually it's not quite that many years, but for, for the few years that this report's been issued now, we've always tried to include significantly more information than that's required because of obviously the, the significant interest in this program. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and go to the first page of the report. First couple paragraphs are really what a lot of people are interested in. This talks about the total number of registered short-term rentals in the city of South Haven. As of January 4, 2023, there were 708 registered short-term rentals in the city. This is just shy of a 30% increase from the same date the year before. Based on the results of our calculation, so the ordinance establishes a, a calculation for the four to one ratio, the maximum cap. We calculate that there are 497 non-exempt business short-term rentals allowed in 2023. Presently, there are 449 that are registered, which leaves 48 non-exempt business designations available for 2023. With that being said, city staff will continue to accept applications and issue non-applications until September 1, 2023, or until that limit is reached. And then in the table below on that first page, that is us showing our work. That's the math. Continuing on, we've got some data about the historical trends of short-term rentals in the community. And then moving on to statistical areas, this is a segment of the report that people have really liked in the past. It's broken up the city of South Haven into some concentration areas. This year, we've shown two different versions. One is all short-term rentals and all housing units. And the second one is all business non-exempt rentals and all non-exempt housing units. Just to give a couple different perspectives of this data, you'll see those maps to follow.
Sure, I can put something up on the board. We're going through the, the report at kind of a fast clip. Is there something, we can just put this up on there.
So moving on, we're then getting to maximum occupancy breakdown. In the past, the, the report had included some data about different bedroom counts, but what we get a lot more questions about is maximum occupancy breakdown. So included that, just to see the percentage of, of the short-term rentals that we have at, at different maximum occupancies. And then moving on to some of the code enforcement statistics, some of the language we view similarly to the code enforcement report on, on different code-related issues that was brought before you all earlier in the year, and then a few different violation tables. As you can see, the recorded enforcement actions associated with the short-term rental program has gone, gone up substantially over the last year as, as that was something that city council made it very clear to our team that that was a priority. So we have issued 33 tickets for violations of the short-term rental ordinance over the last calendar year. And then moving on to the last segment of the report, which is the revenues and expenditures, really just a brief summary is this was a topic that was discussed a lot, actually after the 2022 snapshot report. I think it was in March last year, the city council discussed and ultimately decided to increase the fees associated with the short-term rental program. These fees were estimated to generate approximately $50,000 annually to close the gap created by fiscal year 2019, 2020. And I am pleased to share, as evident by the financial reports and data included in this report, that the progress is being made as, as expected associated with that. And then the last thing I'm going to draw your attention to before I turn it over for any questions you may have is the chart on page 319. Personally, I, when it comes to the revenues and expenditures of the program, I feel like this is the most helpful, the most helpful data, if you will, or the most helpful display. It shows the last five years of the program, recognizing that the most, the fiscal year we are in presently, we're only halfway through that fiscal year, so that is still our projections at this time. But it does show you kind of the history of the revenues and expenditures of that program over time, drawing your attention to fiscal year 1920. Obviously, that's when COVID, city hall was shut down. The program was really stalled for many years, so you can see that revenues were substantially less that year, definitely impacting the program that, that year. But with that being said, I'm here, I'm going to do the best I can to answer any questions, but I'm excited to share this report with you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Good summary. Go ahead and then we'll get some public comment as well.
Yeah, just one question. Do we have a number of business short-term rental applications that are on hold, basically awaiting approval of this report?
We do. I believe that number is 17.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Joe, you have something?
So my first question has to do with this number of new housing units, 111. You and I talked about this briefly this morning, so you probably don't want to hear it come up again. But of the 111 new homes, the big question, I think, for the residents and for myself is how many of those homes were built for year-round residents and how many were built for short-term rentals? And that gives us an idea of where the, the city is going because I find it ironic and questionable that if we draw a conclusion that we're building more homes for this town for people to live in, when in fact our population is decreasing. So if we're, you had said once that we're the envy of other towns and yet because of new construction, but the new construction, if it's not going for year-round residents, then we're, we are in fact losing population, losing school students, et cetera. So it's a difficult number, 111, when it may not be for people living here, maybe all short-term rentals.
So maybe I can help a little bit, Joe, because yep, after you brought that up earlier, I was able to do a little bit more work and I think Kate just put up a map we were able to put up. So we were able to take a deeper look at the 111 new units that have been constructed since the census number. And 72 of those 111 are not registered short-term rentals and 39 of those 111 are registered short-term rentals. So you're looking at roughly two-thirds to one-third, if you will, 72 to 39.
Do the, the PDUs have to register their short-term rentals?
Yes. They're registered. They don't count towards the cap, but they are registered.
Thank you.
Yep. And just for the sake of, of the map, we put it together a little last minute, but again, our team's fantastic that they were able to do this. The dots are the, excuse me, the green dots are new construction. Kate, can you scroll down just so I can see the table if you, or the key, just so I make sure I don't miss the numbers? Yep. So the green dots are new construction, not short-term rentals. Purple dots are new construction, short-term rentals, and the red dots were the demolitions. So we did put the green or the purple dots on top of the red dots if it was an area where a house was demolished and then immediately rebuilt. So that's the few examples we, we have there and hopefully that's helpful, Joe, just after our conversation. This is, you know, the best we're able to do to help respond to that question.
And not to be negative, but still 40% short-term rentals of the new homes being built, that's a lot of short-term rentals. And we don't know of the remaining 72, how many will become short-term rentals, but let's hope.
You're correct. I got, I have no way to know either.
Yeah, and I wouldn't expect you to. The other concern I have with this is when you look at it by area, and I'm looking, because I represent Ward 1, Ward 1 has roughly 32% of all of its properties are short-term rentals. I can only comment that that to me, to many residents, is far exceeding how we want to live in a community and make it feel like a community when better, almost one out of every three homes are short-term rentals. That's all.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. When I see all the yellow dots and, you know, they're not all business and some are personal, but it just is shocking to me that that's what our town looks like. I do have a question though about the process. And I don't have it in front of me, so I don't know if this is accurate or not, but is it meant to be that the remaining permits are issued in January only? Or can they be issued on a rolling basis?
It can be issued on a rolling basis after February 15th through September 15th or February 1, whatever the dates are. I don't have them in front of me through, through the September date on a rolling basis.
And applications can be submitted during that time?
They, applications can be submitted at any time, even if it's outside of that window. Like we started this year, they're just not processed until you get back to the, the open period, if you will.
Okay. And then would you mind just telling us what the on hold means? The on hold status, is it when it's being processed?
On hold can mean a variety of different things and that's why, I know we've gotten asked before and some people don't like the answers that we've been able to provide, but right, on, on hold can mean it's being processed. On hold can mean there's something unique going on with that property that we're looking into further. Unique or on hold has also been used in the past for other things that we're working on cleaning up. So I, unfortunately, I don't have a better answer than it means it's, it's, it's working through the process and it's on hold.
Okay.
I can work to, and I, I will, I know there's been questions, you know, our, our team can try to work to put something in writing to, to clarify that a little bit, but you know, unfortunately, when it, when it comes to properties, like you all have heard me said on several occasions, properties are unique. As much as we think we, you know, they all fit in a perfect box, you know, like people, they're, they're, they're unique in a lot of different ways. They have their own history, they have their own dynamics in terms of shapes and sizes and timing and so again, I think the on hold is, you know, we're trying to treat everyone right and trying to treat everyone fair and, and on occasions, that means some properties got to be on hold while we do our due diligence to make sure we're treating them right and abiding by the ordinance.
And can I just ask you one more question about that? If there was a failed inspection for a permit that was submitted, I guess, an application, can those be on hold while they remedy the issue and get re-inspected or does it just go down to the next in line?
Let me answer that the best I can.
Okay.
Right now, they've never had to give up and go to the next in line because we've never been to the cap. Have there been situations where while someone is remedying, are they put on hold? I believe so, but I can't speak to specific situations. I'd, I'd have to talk to my team who's, who's doing that directly.
Okay, I was just curious. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Want to take some public comments? Public questions, comments? State your name, you'll have up to five minutes.
Hi, Dave Tuttle, 116 Clinton. If I could just clarify, there's two points, I think. At some point recently, I think that we moved from a rolling permit process to an annual process such that it would became like for the calendar year when, and I think that that was within the past two years that we've shifted that process of saying all the registrations are as of January. Is that correct?
We've always done throughout the year and we've done that since 2016. Are you talking about the fiscal year, how we changed that from, from a calendar year, you know, looking at the financials to a, to a fiscal year?
No.
My, my understanding was is that people had to essentially that, that there was something that said it was, the permit was good for the calendar year. It used to be that it was good for 12 months from the time they did it. So historically, the renewals of those were happening. And I thought that it ended up being that, that when people got it during the course of 2020, it was good through December and they would have to get another one for 2023.
No, they're good for, they're good for 12 months. It's not for the calendar.
So that, that doesn't account for the 30%? I thought that there was an.
No, no. No, and they're done on that rolling because it's the only way we're able to keep up with inspections. I don't say this, you know, disrespectfully to anybody, but you know, we have one full-time staff member trying to, to manage 708 short-term rental properties. It's, it's, it's a lot for one person to manage when it comes to all, going on all those inspections. I mean, we're doing, we're doing.
Kudos to the inspection team over the past two years. There's been a lot higher quality of inspections and I know a lot of the rental people that have essentially groused about, hey, somebody's now complained about this when they haven't in the past two years. Well, good, that means the inspection is being done and it's holding up to where it should be. So thank you very much for the inspection on that. Could you clarify the other point then is that for those people, those complaints or tickets issued for not having a permit, what is the, what was the financial penalty? Is that if somebody is renting their house out for $500 a night, did they get a ticket for $100 or?
The, the, the fine is outlined in the ordinance and I believe for, there's a $750 fine and there's a $1,000 fine. I'm not remembering which ones which off the top of my head, I'd have to pull up the ordinance.
Do we, do we feel that those entities then stopped renting or were they able to still can collect $500 a night for the next two months until they got one?
It's case by case. I can tell you, when our office issues a $1,000 ticket, I hear almost every time.
Great.
They're, they're, they are reaching out, it is, it is getting attention. I can say there are also at least one situation I can think of where we were being ignored regardless of the enforcement we took and we pursued appropriate legal action and have them in court right now. So, I mean, like most situations that unfortunately council's heard me say several times, code enforcement's not necessarily a, a smooth process every time. We've got to do the best we can to work with people to bring them into compliance and some people respond well to certain things and some people respond better to others. So we do the best we can with the tools we have to keep people in compliance.
Well, thank you for the report and thank you for the continued enforcement.
Thank you. Thank you.
Joe Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street. One question, Griffin. At one point, at what time do you usually, or would you expect the application to come in for a new construction? There's 73 out there, right? That are you, are those new constructions?
Within the last two years, yes.
Yep. Oh, within the last year, so they're already being occupied now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
It's, I couldn't find, so Indiana Street, there's one on Indiana Street. Reason why I'm asking because in Ward 1, to my knowledge, most of those homes that I've seen go, that's, that's gone up, those are short-term rentals.
There's Indiana Street.
So Indiana, there should be what, a green dot?
You've got one right there and you've got one right there and you've got one right there.
All right, so, okay, I just wanted to make sure what, I, I want to get clarity at what point do you usually see an application come in? When they receive a right to occupy?
Yes, so we don't, we, and we've clarified this and obviously like anything, we're, we're imperfect and correct where we can correct, but we don't, we don't process short-term rental applications until occupancy has been given.
It just seemed like in Ward 1, most of them are being built for short-term rentals, what I see, especially in our, the south side. Those are big homes going up and they just, you, just short-term rentals.
Just to clarify, we, we receive applications all the time, but until there's a certificate of occupancy, we don't process an application. We did have two instances this year with some of our new folks, they didn't realize to ask for the certificate of occupancy, so refunded those two applications that were started without the certificate.
Thanks.
Thanks. Dan Agnello, 964 Everett Parkway. I already talked about this, Joe, but the 39% are one-third, you know, we're 44% now we're exempt because we're in a PUD. But like Bishop Wilkins said, almost every new house going up, the new one going, other one going on the corner of Elkenberg and St. Joe, the three-story, it's going to be a rental. A friend of mine that fishes, it's his sister from Ann Arbor that's building that house. She also has a rental someplace closer into town. But I, I like, I, one statistic here that I'm concerned about is that these business exempt STRs keep going up every year. I don't, I don't know how this is happening because it, a lot, few years ago, there's only like half as many exempt ones and I believe if they're exempt, they don't have to have all the parking requirements and whatever. And that kind of concerns me. And then, then the, you know, you look at this map, like Wendy said, you look at the south part of town, it's all yellow. It's all yellow, that means they're all, all STRs. Not in this map, but if you look on one of the other ones, it's all yellow, it blows your mind, okay? There's our, there's most, a lot of our 708 are south of the river. And then, then the last thing is the violations. Now, they've gone up tremendously, Griffin, I'll, I'll admit that. But. But, there's, there's information on here that's not even included, and I brought it up many times, we should not, we should not issue personal STRs. If they're gonna rent their place, pay the six hundred dollars, whatever it is, have it inspected every year, because there's no way to enforce that. Now, supposedly with this new computer program, the company that we're consulting with is going to have better data, but I gave you the example, my next-door neighbor has a personal STR, they rented it eight times, when they're only allowed to do it six times, and there was no data, okay? Kelly Tungit had the information from our consultant, said it was rented twice. The only way Kelly could get that information was to call Shores, Shores told me it was eight. Now, Shores doesn't care, give them a seven hundred and fifty dollar ticket, they don't care, because they made twenty percent on those two rentals, and my neighbors made twelve thousand dollars. Those rentals in, in Trailside go anywhere between six and seven thousand dollars in the summer, so they don't care. And, and, and I guess my, my one question is, if we're going to enforce, and, and he's working, they're working hard, like he said, I've got a few people to do it, but if we're gonna issue certificates for, for personal STRs, then how are we gonna enforce it? Now, the, he said that they're, they're going to issue, make sure they issue the information about when it is rented and for how long, okay? But, but there should be a penalty, if they don't provide the data, they don't provide the information, then they should be fined also, it should be just, it should be added to the ordinance, just like it is for any other, any other citations, okay? Because they're getting away with a lot, there's no way, there's no way to, to administer this, because I just happened, I found out from Kelly that it was, it's a personal STR, I didn't know it, it doesn't say on our certificate, it shows, you know, what the license date is for that year, whatever it is, but there's, there's nothing, I thought first of all it was yellow paper and the white paper, but I don't think it is. So, you know, there should be some designation for personal ones too, because I, I didn't know it until we had a problem with a party that one night, and I called, and Kelly said, oh, that's a personal STR, and I said, oh, well, we'll have to see what's going on here. So, uh, they're doing a great job and stuff, but we, we gotta do something, and I, I keep saying this, it's on blue in the face, and you're probably tired of hearing it, but we keep kicking this can down the road. Hopefully, when Jim has this study, and next, next meeting and meeting after that, that something gets done. You see what's happening in some of these townships, like in Lake Township in Holland, they put a moratorium, they said, no STRs, that's it, and I, we're not saying no STRs, but something has to be done, thank you. Something has to be done to limit this, okay? You know, they have their right to have a rental, we have a right to have neighborhoods, thank you.
Thank you. Was there anybody else? Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Ashley Greer, forty-two Delaware Court. Uh, my husband, five-year-old son, and I have been full-time residents of South Haven since April of this past year. We've owned property in South Haven for five years, and have been coming to South Haven for most of our lives. We're transplants from both Grand Rapids and Kalamazoo, but since we've been married, we've moved from Sagatuck to various neighborhoods in surrounding Grand Rapids. We've moved five times since we got married ten years ago, and we chose South Haven. We chose this community as the place we want to call home and raise our family. When we moved, uh, when we lived in Grand Rapids, we worked in a corporate world and we owned long-term rental properties. We wanted a change of pace and a closer community, so we sold everything we owned and changed our careers to spend more time with family. By investing our life savings into this community and having the ability to rent out our properties, it gave us the opportunity to have a better balance and the ability to live and work in this town. Working in the tourism industry allowed my husband and I to work together and for us, our son to be a part of what we do. We love showing families from all over the beauty of South Haven, and what better way to do that than hosting families and sharing our local favorites? Every one of our guests love this town and want to come back, and some want to move here. We were nothing but filled with excitement when we moved here, and were quickly shook by listening into council meetings and hearing the negative feelings from a select few of our neighbors. We felt very unwelcome and frankly nervous for the way our son would be treated in this community, and we didn't want to tell anyone what we do or why we love what we do. We heard the rhetoric of, we want young families who bring jobs here, but it felt like they didn't mean our young family or our jobs. That being said, we didn't tiptoe into South Haven, we dove into the deep end. Uh, we watched and listened and made the decision, the decision that we had to seek out the truth around rentals in this community, especially as a young family ourselves, and to be proud of who we are and what we choose to do. I'm so thankful for the business owners, select neighbors, and family I've met through the school and our church that invited us into their homes, they didn't judge us, and they made us realize that the majority of the community did not feel this way. They welcomed us and were excited about what we have come here to do. This led us to ask a question this summer, maybe we aren't the only ones feeling isolated and hurt. To make a short story even shorter, I asked if other vacation rental homeowners would like to get together in August of this year, and what started as me thinking we would have six people out, uh, for coffee, has evolved into an alliance that now represents over four hundred properties in this community. We are all South Haven too, I felt like I immediately made over a hundred friends. Around a quarter of us are full-time residents of this city, many spend a large portion of the year in their rental homes, and some of us plan on moving into our rental homes in the future. None of us are corporations or large businesses, in fact, that applies to almost every vacation rental in South Haven. I hear stories from our members weekly that they may have decided not to move here any longer because of the hate directed towards them, those that are worried about people trespassing on their properties, and some who have sold or are selling because this community they love has made them feel as though they are no longer wanted. I'm here in hopes to remind everyone that there's a human element here that is often forgotten when certain statements are made. We come from all over, many from right here, and we are all different, but we share a common theme, we love South Haven. There was a time that my husband and I worried that we made the wrong decision in moving to South Haven. We realize there are things that need to be worked on, but we don't expect anyone to just do that for us. We intend to be a part of that growth and a part of that change. We want to facilitate and contribute to that change as much as possible, it matters to our future as a family. We are asking that there's recognition and there's consideration that there is diversity in the needs of this community. We're hoping that one singular subject does not prevent progress. I hope we can communicate with one another, that we can have constructive dialogue based on facts to break down barriers and eliminate the us versus them mentality. It's amazing that surrounding our primary residence, we have second homeowners on either side of us, we have full-time residents across the street and a short-term rental behind us. Let's not forget how incredible it is that we live in such a desirable place, that not only are we recognized nationwide as one of the most beautiful places, but we accept all varieties of residents at whatever stage of life you're in, thank you.
Thanks for your comments, and thanks for sticking around for two and a half hours to share that.
Mary Hasley, seven twenty-six North Shore Drive. I think several people share the same opinion about frustration, and I think that's been a resounding message that things have taken too long, too many reports. I think it would be helpful to get things resolved more quickly, and I think the first step is having consistent definitions and interpretations, and where minds can differ, not forcing residents to pit themselves against each other, but to send things to the ZBA, like with regard to just exactly what is an attached condo. I appreciate trying to redo, uh, reports and have more data, but what became clear, comparing what the table for this year is for the numbers from last year, is that the number of available homes increased by ninety, but it's ironic that the number of new homes built is completely canceled out by the number of homes demolished and the number of PUDs excluded. And so, out of transparency, I would request that we get a list of the new homes that have been added to the list that weren't not there last year. Um, last year's PUDs excluded was eighty-eight, this year it's a hundred and one. Um, the attached condos went down by four, so I'm guessing that was part of demolition, because those are per se removed, so I think the only way they could be decreased, unless maybe the definition was, um, modified. So, in trying to move forward and have a consensus of how to move forward and the path to take, that starts with clear definitions, and again, attached condos is got to be addressed sooner than later, and the, the zoning ordinance rewrite is not sufficient, because I believe the way it's being exercised in this, under this ordinance is inconsistent with the definition, so we just need some transparency. Towards that further agenda of transparency is, it was nice to see the table of the number of types of violations, but what would have been even more helpful is rather than having the separate table on enforcement actions, showing how many warnings, infractions, and were unfounded, is to have it parallel so that just to the right of the column of the number, you then have the number of, for each one that was reported, the number that had just a warning, the number that had a fine, and the number that were unfounded. For finances, it would be helpful to know how many of those, what were the fees from those, because all I see for revenues are personal and business STR rentals, I don't see anything for fines, and that seems like that should be going towards that. Because we would definitely want to offset expenses, and the expenses for STR-related costs, I believe is undervalued, um, under-reported, because I have asked this before and haven't gotten a complete answer, at least not to my satisfaction, is how much of the, um, Ms. Zink's expenses are for STR? I saw in one of her invoices that she had worked on STRs, and she's in finance, she's a finance consultant that we pay. Um, and then legal expenses, so I believe that that minds differ between residents and staff as to where legal expenses should go, but I remind this council that just in the last few months, they voted in a fifteen hundred dollar escrow fee for a resident to have to plop down, and now have increased the fees to, uh, challenge a bad decision before the ZBA. For FOIA requests, citizens who want information have had to pay money to get those, because we have to pay for staff time and legal fees. So, and Corolos actually had to pay for Nick's travel expenses to ZBA, when he had to be there anyway for a, a, an education on ZBA jurisdiction. I think that was just shameful that the city charged that travel expense to the Corolos to fi- from filing that ZBA appeal. To add insult to injury, the taxpayers now appear, unless attorney fees are added, to have to cover the STR attorney fees. I'm just saying, it needs to go, the fees and expenses need to follow what it's for. The fines should go into the income, and the other expenses should go into the expenses, we need a balanced budget. And also personal STRs, although they are only, um, the inspection is only every other year, the ordinance is clear that they need to file a yearly rental record with the city, and I think that that should be readily available, and that is not being done and needs to be, thank you.
Thanks for your time, anybody else? Someone's going to waste, oh, almost. Last but not least, good evening.
We'll see if I'm last. Um, my name's Ryan Dieters, um, four oh six North Shore. South Haven has always been a special place for me, growing up in Kalamazoo, this was where my family and my friends came in the summer. Some of my earliest memories are playing at the Kids' Corner, then walking down those stairs to South Beach. Uh, we'd watch the boats go down the channel with my grandparents, sometimes we'd go to Clementines or Sherman's or Dairy Queen, and when I was in high school, my parents divorced and my mom started a new tradition of coming once per summer over Fourth of July to South Haven. We'd rent a big house for a week near North Shore Beach with a few of her closest friends, whose kids also happened to be some of my closest friends. At the time, our family really needed that week of fun, and it became my favorite week of the year. Some of my best childhood memories and high school memories are in this town, and I would not have those memories without the home that we rented every summer. Fast forward to twenty twenty-one, and my wife and I began searching for a place that we and our baby daughter could stay and make memories along the lake shore. We knew we couldn't afford to own a place without also renting it out. Given my history with the town, South Haven was obviously a place that we were interested in. We also learned that the city had a well-established and regulated process for vacation rentals. At the time, that made us feel confident the city would not pull the financial rug out from under us and take away that ability to rent. We were looking for a place that fall, when a unique property came up, three nineteen twenties clapboard cottages on adjacent lots being sold together. They needed some love and repair, but we could see the charm and potential, and we thought they'd be an amazing place to have friends and family come stay with us. While we'd only been looking for one place, we saw new options. Maybe my wife and I could both work remotely for the most part, and we could move to South Haven full-time, live in one of the homes, and run out the others. Maybe my wife could quit her corporate job, and we could spend more time with our daughter and make a little income managing the houses instead. We decided to go for it, it was a huge financial decision for us, and we also spent hundreds of hours fixing them up while, uh, keeping true to their nineteen twenties charm. Our little family stayed out here for much of the winter and the spring, keeping the lights hot in the town. And we spoke with contractors along the way, where we learned that had we not purchased the homes, they thought it most likely that a developer would have bought them, knocked them down, and built brand-new million-dollar homes there instead. This made us even happier that we were preserving and restoring these little pieces of South Haven history. Everything changed when we started the process to get our rental permits. I saw a side of South Haven I had never seen before, an ugly side, an unwelcoming side, a petty side. We've watched ourselves be publicly disparaged in these meetings on multiple occasions, we've had to defend ourselves from zoning disputes, we've had city enforcement called to our house for a barely a jar recycling lid or a trash can out for a bit too long. We've even had police called to our house with the accusation that we cut a neighbor's vine growing on the fence between our properties, we obviously did no such thing. South Haven used to be the setting of my best childhood memories, it's now a place I feel bullied, harassed, and anxious. Needless to say, this has discouraged us from moving here. If you've ever wondered why more property owners who rent don't share their stories here, it's because they're afraid. Initially, I thought this was only happening to us, but as I connected with Ashley and other owners in South Haven, it became clear this was a pattern of behavior many of us were facing from a group of aggressive, anti-rental community members. I never knew, back when my family rented a place every summer, there was a group of people who hated our right to do that so much. In spite of challenges and negativity we faced, we've loved being part of South Haven as a family. We've had our family and friends with their small kids out to stay, we've also enjoyed sharing our homes with guests. Most of our renters are families, many with small children, often grandparents will come along, we've had guests come to celebrate sixtieth anniversaries for a girl's weekend after chemo treatment, or to visit family for holidays. The number of heartwarming stories we've heard has surprised us, and they all love South Haven. I choose to believe that the positive welcoming South Haven is the real South Haven, most of South Haven. Many neighbors are friendly, many have stopped to offer encouragement and compliments for the work we've done. I also believe South Haven is full of potential and opportunity, even if it does have challenges to address. I would love to see more time spent focused on creating opportunity or improving city parks and amenities like we heard about tonight, rather than obsessing over STRs. I hope most residents and property owners in South Haven would agree. Lastly, I want to emphasize, I'm a person, I have a family, and while I may not be a voting resident of South Haven, the decision this council and city staff make have enormous impact on my life. The same is true of the five hundred-plus property owners who rent their homes. I thank this council and staff for taking this responsibility seriously and pursuing information and data to inform their decisions, rather than listening to only the loudest voices in the room. Thank you all.
Thank you very much, good time, appreciate it, and sorry you feel that way.
David Beanstraw, twelve twenty Monroe Boulevard. I don't, I don't hate you, I do not hate you, and I welcome your suggestion that we need communication between us. There are, um, many of us residents that do feel that, uh, there's a need for restrictions on STRs. No one is trying to take your right, um, to have an STR away. Uh, there have been proposals to limit through attrition the number overall of STRs, but there has not been any serious proposal to actually revoke the STR rights of anyone that currently has one, so I just want you to be assured of that. We live at twelve twenty Monroe Boulevard, it's a blue, uh, house right along Monroe Boulevard there, um, near, uh, between Apache and, uh, Alworth. Stop by, we're out gardening a lot, so welcome, we don't hate you, not at all. But I, I did just want to emphasize that we as residents do have legitimate concerns that we want addressed, and the, there ha- there, I think are a handful of people on both sides that have gotten ugly about this, and it needs to stop.
Well-stated, thank you, anybody else? Oh, one more, one more.
I'm from Chicago, so you may hate me.
Uh-oh, you'll be okay, you're okay.
I'm a Cubs fan.
At, I'm actually a Tigers fan, I grew up in Michigan.
Oh, you're okay, you're fine, you're fine.
So, uh, I'm, I'm, my name's James Oakley, I own a home at three hundred Erie Street, that is one of the new homes that's, uh, on the chart there. Um, just two comments, one, uh, on behalf of another person who had to leave, she was, uh, her name's Catherine Clark, she was here with a young baby, she had to leave, so she asked me to make a comment for her, so I'd like to pass that along, and then I'll pass along a couple of things about myself personally. Catherine Clark asked me to say that- Catherine Clark asked me to say this to the group. We fell in love with South Haven and bought a house here almost three years ago. This is truly our happy place, and we are planning to spend most of the year here when our son is old enough to enroll in preschool at St. Basil. However, due to our jobs, I go into the office, and my husband is a pilot based out of O'Hare, we have to keep up Chicago Home Base. To make the numbers work, our home here is an STR during the summer, so I sincerely hope we can continue renting it out. There are so many others that are in the same position we are. South Haven truly, is a truly magical place, and we love sharing it with our family and friends. Though we can't be here all the time, we would love to be included in the council's continued conversations so that we can be informed part-time residents and contribute in the best way possible to the South Haven community. Thank you. Now, just wanted to make a couple of comments about myself personally. As I said, I live in the Chicagoland area, but I grew up in a small town called Milford, which is near, somewhat near the Detroit area, and my entire family is there, including my brothers and their children and my parents. My wife and I and our boys live in the Chicagoland area and have been coming to visit South Haven and Sagatuck for a long time, both places. And eventually, we started to think, especially since my boys are so close with my parents and the rest of their family in Michigan, it'd be nice to actually buy a place here. And it's really like exactly halfway between the two, so that we could spend time together. And so we started the process to do that, and, you know, had a hard time finding a place, and outbid, and eventually bought a lot and built this home. But, you know, and our plan is to spend as much time as we can there, and, you know, I have a lot of flexibility in my job, and so, and in the businesses that I own, so I just, you know, like today, yesterday, tomorrow, I'll be working here and plan to do that quite a bit, and hopefully can have my parents come, who are retired, and spend time with us as well. So that's kind of our story, and I just wanted to pass it along, because I think maybe there are some misconceptions about people from Chicago, and whether they're just, you know, trying to make money, or whether they're trying to spend time here during the winters or the offseason or things like that. So, wanted to point out my own personal story in that regard. And to add a personal aspect to it, I was really kind of caught by surprise. I didn't know that there was this controversy going on, really. Maybe I should have. But I didn't know it until, you know, the way we have been treated by a lot of people has been, I mean, just shocking, frankly. And we've had people, including people in this room, trespass on our property, call our builder, call the architect, contact us. And I don't know why, there are people that don't know me. I don't feel that I ever did anything wrong or inappropriate to anyone. And they've not been nice to my wife. So I, I think that that's not appropriate, and I, I wish that people wouldn't do that. And I, and I think that, you know, from my perspective, I've tried not to meet those things with aggressive responses, because, you know, my goal is to enjoy my time here, not to fight with people. So I, I think, I would like if people could treat those of us that choose to invest in the community and spend whatever time we can here politely.
That's fair. Thanks for your comments, and thanks for sticking around this evening. Was there anybody else before we put the lid on this topic? Nothing. All right, council, anything else other than?
I've got just a couple rule code questions. One, I appreciate the graph that's showing right now. Do you know, in the, in the, in the graph that shows the number of new unit short-term rentals, do we know if they're business short-term rentals or just residential?
Admittedly, I, we put this together right before the meeting. I'm sure that's data we could put together if that's what council wanted, but right now, we don't.
No, just me being curious, George. Okay. Another question, so I'm looking at page 316. It's the gra, it's the map that shows the business non-exempt short-term rentals. And I notice in, like Harbor Club, it shows zero rentals, and Trailside shows zero rentals. Is that just because that's exempt? Or is that because there are no business short-term rentals in those?
That's a good question. So if you don't mind going up, maybe two pages to, I'm on 313. So it talks about the statistical area, the exempt PUDs, and it talks a little bit that right there, none in there because of the exempt/non-exempt status differential.
Got it. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Graham, I do have a question about the red dot on the south side. The map is gone.
This one?
The one down there at the bottom. It was by Elkenberg.
Okay.
This, let me just point on it. Are you talking about this one right here?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, I, where is that? I haven't seen that.
I'd have to, I'd have to look into it specifically for that one.
So that means that something is going to be torn down, right?
Correct. So that, that means.
That was an issue building or demolition.
Yeah, that means.
Doesn't mean that it started yet, because I have not seen anything on, that, would that be Spencer Street? It's Elworth, and then, or Cartwright?
I think, I think it's Spencer and then Cartwright, because I think it goes Cable, Abel, Spencer, Cartwright. So it was somewhere in between Spencer and Cartwright. But I'd have to, I'd have to go back to where we pulled this from to find out what that is. We can get that to you tomorrow.
Then I just have one last comment there.
Go.
So I was just looking at the one map with all the dots, the yellow dots, and I know we, I think, Griffin, you said it was only like 30-something percent on the south side, but why does it seem like it's so many more dots on the south side? Can you just help me understand that?
I, I don't, other than, other than just how the map looks.
I mean.
If you, if you think about, if you think about this neighborhood, though.
Please help me.
Those are, those are a lot of reasonable-priced houses, or were, were. And so that was why that area became a prime area for short-term rentals.
Right. I get that.
Okay.
I'm just saying.
She's saying the dots maybe are bigger.
Yeah, I'm talking about the, the number.
What it could also be, if this is helpful, Letitia, is, so it's a percentage of the total in that area, but then there's also the total numbers of rentals there. So for example, there's, if we're looking at the same map, so I'm looking at the one on 314, there's 227 rentals there. So there's 227 dots. So even though that's 32%, and let's say, if you go up a little bit, it says this one's 20%, but there's 144 rentals, part of the difference, too, could be, you know, for some of these buildings over here, that's like an attached condo, if it's a bunch of different units, there still may only be one dot there. So I, it's just how the map turned out is the unsatisfying answer I can give.
So is it possible that it's actually a bigger number of short-term rentals?
I'm confident in these maps and this data.
You're confident, you're 100% confident that that's pretty accurate?
I'm confident in these maps and this data.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. Ryan's good at what he does. So I would agree.
Hmm?
Ryan's good at what he does.
Ryan?
Ryan.
Mapmaker.
Map guy?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I'll just, anybody else?
Yeah, just one final quick comment. I have some real questions about the STR-related cost, the $10,000. It's my understanding the legal fees are in that number. I have to question that number. Here's what I was told today, that if the, if our legal counsel sat here and we had a three-hour or a two-hour meeting, let's say easy numbers, three-hour meeting, one hour discuss short-term rentals, two hours discuss something else. My belief was the one hour, take his total fee, one-third of that should go to short-term rentals, because we discuss short-term rentals. I was told today that, no, if it's a general meeting for city council, none of the legal fees go in the short-term rental. Now, I remember when I first got on city council five years ago, our prior city manager made it abundantly clear, more than once to me and to city council, that every minute that that lawyer discussed anything related to short-term rentals, even defending zoning, anything that had something to do with short-term rental, the city captured that amount of money and put it towards short-term rentals, the expense, because it should be self-sustaining. All the lawyer interaction that we had last year or the last 12 months, I find it hard to believe, not question, not doubting your intention, but it just doesn't seem right that total amount could only be $10,000. So what I'd like, I'll do the work, give me every expense that the lawyer had and what he did it for, and I'll pull the numbers, or somebody on city staff. But somehow, we have to have some credit, we have to have some assurance that that number is close to being accurate, and I just have my doubts. If you think I'm way off balance, and don't do anything, but at least I want it known that I have doubts about it, about $10,000 for all the legal fees. And that's not even all legal fees right there. So I just have some real concerns about that amount of money. Because I think short-term rentals should be self-sustaining. We all agree with that. Whatever income comes in should pay for all the expenses. And I just find it surprising that based on what lawyers charge, the whole year is $10,000.
Okay.
Check it out.
All right, thank you.
Was there anybody else?
I'd make a motion to accept the 2023 Short Term Rental Snapshot Report.
Second.
All right, we got a motion second. I'll just, my last comments were just going to be, I am encouraged by the data gathering, by the enforcement we have, by the improvements. I think there are a lot of folks that are doing the right thing, and who are maybe being treated poorly for all the wrong reasons. So I think we should continue to enforce the ordinance, make sure it's being done properly, do our job properly to make sure the process goes smoothly. I'm encouraged by new home building. 79 were not rentals, if that's correct. That's pretty nice. I mean, that's, that's fantastic. There's a lot of homes being built, you know, in a small town where cities our size don't see a lot of home building going on. I can tell you that. If you'd like to road trip in my hometown this Friday, I'll take you. There's not much going on. So we should be encouraged. We're attractive, but we should always be asking, why are we maybe not attracting the demographic we're trying to get? So that's the nut we gotta crack. So, okay, we got a motion second to accept that snapshot report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's approved. All right. City Council, we have to accept the 2022 Planning Commission Annual Report.
I'm going to keep this one very brief, recognizing it's, it's 10:00 PM, and you all have been here since 5:00, so thank you all for, for bearing with us. I know we've had a lot of things on the agenda. Like every year, we bring before you the annual report associated with the Planning Commission. That's what's before you this evening. This was brought before the Planning Commission at their January meeting, and it highlights their work over the last year. As a quick reminder, right from the beginning, kind of message to staff part of this report, this is done annually in association with the requirement of the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. So that's the intent of this report, is to make sure we're satisfying those requirements. We've got a little bit of a discussion in what we do, and then a couple neat tables summarizing the different actions of the Planning Commission. And then I know South Haven historically is gone above and beyond, and also included the actions of the Zoning Board of Appeals in this report. So with that being said, this, this is more a documentation, or more for documentation purposes than anything else. But per the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, we are bringing it before the legislative body of the city of South Haven to consider for acceptance. Happy to answer any questions.
Just a big kudos and thanks to everybody on the Planning Commission, because it's a lot of work.
That brings up a question for me. Are there any planning commissions in Michigan where it is a paid role? Like?
Say that one more time for me.
Are there other planning commissions in Michigan where it's paid?
There are, there are planning commissions that compensate members of boards and commissions.
Okay. I'm just wondering, because I think they do so much work. I know they don't do it for money or recognition or anything, but I don't know if that's a conversation to have at some point. When we talk about equity and stuff like that, it could be a way to gain more diverse representation. That's all.
Okay. Thank you.
Good.
Anybody else? Otherwise?
I'd make a motion to accept the 2022 Planning Commission Annual Report.
Second.
All right. Motion and second to accept the Planning Commission Annual Report. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's accepted. And next, citizens in the audience who've heard on items and not on the agenda, if you'd like to come on up, if you're still awake.
If you're starting to do this.
You'll have five minutes.
George. Get to read your notes. Joe Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street. I want to first start off by apologizing to the mayor, Mayor Scott, and the council. Last, the last meeting, I, I spoke out of turn a couple times, you know, passionate over the food truck stuff and a lot of stuff that's going on, but I recognize that that is something I should know, and I recognize who I represent, and I want to be on the right side each time. So I want to apologize, should not have been talking from my seat. And having a wife, spouse on, on the council will remind me if I done something wrong. So I want to start off by saying, with that being said, it kind of hurts me to hear individuals, although I respect both sides of this argument with STRs, it does hurt to hear individuals talk about present personal gain over their future well-being of our entire city. That hurts. To me, at best, at least, that's kind of shortsighted. Dr. King quoted, "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy." And we do know it's his birthday today. But I use that quote for a reason on today, because I believe that it's the council's responsibility, it's residents' responsibility, we have an obligation to stand for the well-being of everyone in this city, especially when it comes to STRs. South Haven is home. I hear people coming up talking about, I've invested, I've moved from here. I grew up, I was born here. 57 years I've lived in South Haven. I can tell you about South Haven, and all the factories, all that stuff that took place back then. South Haven was one beautiful place. There was a lot of diversity. Neighbors, you knew your neighbors. The neighbors knew you. As a kid, one of the fondest, fondest memories coming up in the summer months was me, as a little kid, making my father lunch, getting on a bike, racing, riding down to National Motors to meet him there before that horn would go off. If you didn't know anything about the horn, you're not a real resident, a longtime resident of South Haven. And guess what? The guards knew me. Mr. Johnson knew me. Mr. Jack knew me. Neighbors knew, we knew one another. That was the beauty of South Haven. There was diversity in South Haven. And so we're missing that. STR is robbing us of that experience. And so I close when I say this, you know, those are things we can't set a price on. Those are moments that I was able to capture as a young kid, knowing my name, knowing Mr. Jackson that ran the guard shack, allowed me to go in to take my dad his lunch. Those are fond memories of South Haven. Diversity everywhere. Teachers living in the community helped raising us, because it took a village back then. You don't have a village now, because they don't know you. And so those are memories that you can't put a price on for personal gain. Now, I close when I say this. There was a movie, I mean, commercial coming up when I was a young kid. It was a Native American Indian. Many of you all remember that commercial, when people would throw garbage on the land on, out in the streets, property, that Native American Indian would sit there with tears in his eyes to see what was going on, how the land was being treated. That is how I feel. That is how I feel. I've seen people come up emotional, but when you spend 57 years in this area and see what's going on, I feel just like that Native American Indian. When I see STR, and see what STRs is doing, the gingivication that's going on in South Haven. When you look around and you don't hardly see anybody that looks like you. Forefathers that worked in those factories, raised their kids on the south side of South Haven, those that were privileged enough, are fortunate enough to save money to buy, maybe buy land, couldn't buy land, you couldn't go to the banks, because the land where we grew up was in, around was redlined. So they couldn't even buy the land. So that's how I feel when I see what's going on, when I see the South Haven not having the diversity that it used to have coming up. If the end goal is to have South Haven look to If the end goal is to have South Haven look the same and not value that diversity, then we're heading down the right direction. I ask that you consider us in the decision-making, when you start making decisions about STRs. I don't think nobody has said, "Get rid of it." We just try to limit it so we can keep diversity in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anybody else?
Dave Tuttle, 116 Clinton. You had asked at the start that if there was things related to the financial audit report, that they'd be held until the end here. Wanted to make a, just highlight something here. As a CPA, CFO, I did spend the time, it was a delightful read, to spend a couple of hours to go through the audit report. One thing that I'd like to call to your attention was that on page 20 and then on page 23, the city lost, under the governmental funds, $413,000 in interest and earnings losses, and then under the property funds, $457,000 of losses. And so that's over $800,000 of losses that were incurred this year on investments. Understand, the 400, the first one, the $400,000, that's on $8 million of investment, so that's an over 5% loss on the investments here. And when you look at subsequently, then, they've got the 10-year trend, essentially it wipes out any earnings over the past 10 years to have the loss here. And I just want to suggest that it might be worthwhile to dig into it a little bit to make sure, is that an accounting treatment? And as those bonds are held to maturity, we're in fact going to recapture that gain? Or is there potentially something where somebody's been giving us some bad advice from a treasury perspective, that you need to hold a broker or somebody accountable? But again, I know that you're not necessarily financial people, and just wanted to raise that to your attention, and thank you.
No, I appreciate it. Well, that Michelle, she can get you an answer. Appreciate it. Glad to hear you read, a couple hours with that report, that's good.
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive, also the audit. I also spent, maybe not two hours, but, so I was looking, I searched for legal, and I found on page 82, the legal counsel fees, and that $330,000 was budgeted, final was $3,000. The actual amount was 2026, 610, with a positive of 73, 390. I was just wondering, what legal counsel is that, which account number is charged to that? Because in my tracking of legal fees, because you know I've kind of been monitoring that, I know for fiscal year '21, '22, for Curcio, it was almost $106,000, for Manning, it was just over $73,000, for Dickinson, it was almost $98,000, for Clark Hill, it was just over $50,000, it was almost $50,600, for a total of $3,200, $3,327,514. I've been here since 5:00 also, excluding South Haven BRA and CHASA expenses. So my amount of fees, and maybe because I included attorneys who are not in that budget, but for transparency, it would be really nice, especially with budgeting coming up, to know exactly what line item, which firms fall within that, maybe you can associate it with account numbers. And I did, one thing I didn't notice, and I'm not sure where it would be, is that I do know in the last, in this fiscal year, there was debt relief, and I didn't see where that debt relief was accounted for. And maybe it's just because there was 156 pages, but in February of 2022, the council did deficit elimination for over $100,000 for the Marina Fund. And you all were on city council at that time, and were present. And then in February 7th, there was a $70,000 ARPA fund for restoring utilities at the maritime marina. And in January, there was a resolution with regard to the South Haven Joint Building Authority that had a deficit of $118,524, and I just didn't see where those deficits were addressed in the audit. And it would be nice for, and I've said this before, to see budgets and where things are being hit, especially with legal counsel, which I just know has been used a lot in the last year. And it would be nice to know exactly how close or how much overage we are for the upcoming fiscal year budget. But I would like clarification on this past year's budget, legal budget that was just accepted. Thanks.
Look into that.
Yep, I'll follow up.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Anybody else? Going once, going twice, sold. City manager comments?
Thank you. I did want to thank everyone for being here, thank you for coming to our priority session earlier. Again, that's the start of our budgeting process, which takes us four to five months, so thank you for doing that. Also, wanted to thank everybody for being here on observation of MLK Day, Martin Luther King Jr. Day. This was a momentous person in our history, and I think it was wonderful to give thanks for him. I don't have any other comments.
All right, very good. Thank you much for being here for the last five hours.
Since it's Martin Luther King's birthday, I thought, unlike last year, I didn't have a quote. I have a quote which seems appropriate for tonight and for this town. I'll quote him. "We are caught in an inescapable network of mutuality tied in a single garment of destiny. Whatever affects one directly affects all indirectly." It fits this town right now. I think there's a lot of different feelings about short-term rentals. First, I want to address the two of you that spoke up. My heart goes out to you, I don't think anyone that I know that lives here year-round dislikes people that live here, whether you own property or not. But you've got to understand something, the people that live in this town for years, the people that live here year-round are scared right now. They may not want to use that word, but the town they knew, the lifestyle they knew, the neighbors that they knew they could count on are disappearing at a rapid rate. Every time, short-term rental buys property, that's one less year-round resident. Now, it's concerning if you want to have a feeling of neighborhood, if you want to feel like you know the people around you. Now personally, my one neighbor is a short-term rental, I've never had a problem with him, he happens to be my doctor, but I sure wish he lived there 12 months a year, it'd be nice to have a neighbor. We're all concerned about it. But here's the bottom line, we need a balance. No one that I've talked to, and I can speak for myself, that's the most important thing, I don't want short-term rentals to go away. I think it's a needed necessity in this town, because it is still largely a tourist town, but it's not only a tourist town. And if we had a fair mix, a good balance, we could all live here and prosper. But I believe, and this is me speaking, that the balance has gotten out of hand. When we start getting up to 40% of the residents of my ward are short-term rentals, there's something wrong. There's no longer a neighborhood. When I talk to people, little measure, Halloween, they say, "I had seven children come to my home." My old neighborhood, I used to have 200 and something kids come to my home. And I first moved here as a part-time resident, when I was working, and I loved it, and I always said I wanted to retire here. Now, as a retired, semi-retired, my wife still works full-time at the university, we're both concerned about living here, because we're seeing that this is, that all of our neighbors are disappearing, and it's concerning. So here's my bottom line. You said there's 400 people in your group, why don't you get a bunch of them, come and sit down with me? I think the biggest problem on this city council is we're not talking. If we could all talk and come up with a doable plan, we can all live here and prosper and be happy. But the way it's going, we're having two sides against each other, and it's become a battle, and it doesn't have to be that way. So I think we're all relying on each other when we live here, whether we like it or not, and I think we can work together and get this resolved. And I'm happy the gentleman that stood up and said, "We don't hate you," because we don't. We have just concerns that our neighborhoods are disappearing. And I got to believe, if you're a mother, a family, that you want to have neighbors, or you want to have people around you that you can see and talk to. I want to walk down the street with my dog and say hello to my neighbors. And this time of year, I can walk for blocks and blocks and see nobody, and it is concerning. So let's just all get together and talk and come up with a balance, and I think we can fix it. And I think there's at least three of us in the city council have asked to talk, let's talk and have a balance. And I think all of us are concerned about this community, all seven of us. And I think if we did that, we can fix this problem, it's not insurmountable. Anyway, I'm not trying to preach, I just, my heart goes out to you, and it goes out to Pastor Wilkins, and everybody in between, because we all have concerns about living here. Thanks.
Thank you.
George?
I just want to talk briefly about communities. So I've been in South Haven nearly 40 years, and South Haven as a community has definitely changed over that time since I've been here. Now, in some cases, I'd say definitely South Haven has changed for the better. There's other areas where maybe some people would argue that South Haven has not changed for the better. Trying to determine the status of a community can be kind of tricky, and there's a lot of forces involved that have caused our community to change. And it's a complicated, a lot of market forces that have affected that. And I feel that one of the things that's happening is, is short-term rentals have been the scapegoat for a lot of the changes that have happened. Where I live right now, I have hardly any neighbors that live in my neighborhood right now, but it's not because they're short-term rentals, a lot of them are second homeowners. So the thing I'm worried about is that we're trying to regulate a complex market by putting our finger on just one aspect of it, and that's short-term rentals. And the thing that concerns me is that we don't understand how that's going to have an impact on our community, and I'm worried it's going to negatively affect our community. So I want to make sure we take the time and understand as best we can the complex forces that are causing our community to evolve how it has, and just make sure that we don't make something worse. That's it.
Well-stated.
I just wanted to acknowledge Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. on this day, and obviously we have a lot of work to do to live up to his vision and his mission in life. And I, for the second time tonight, just wanted to echo what Joe said. I think he summed up how I feel about short-term rentals pretty well. And yeah, it's just about a balance, there's not anything personal, and I think we can find this harmony together, because our town is vibrant, and it can be better for having people come visit and stay and learn, like, all the great things about South Haven. But we need the year-round community to be thriving too. And yeah, as a mom raising kids here, it's nice to know our neighbors, and we've seen our neighborhood change, and I've said this before, but I just, I personally don't want to raise them surrounded by strangers, and that's a very real possibility at this point. So I think we can get together and talk and find someplace where we can meet in the middle, where we can grow, I don't know, just all enjoy our town, but still see it thriving as a year-round community. That's all.
All good comments. My comments, thanks to everyone that came, some of you have been here since 5:00, thank you for being there the whole time. Thanks for everyone that spoke tonight. As we mentioned, it is the day that we honor Dr. King and being a social studies teacher. I certainly can't let that go without. And I was reading about Dr. King today, and I came up with a, not came up, I just stumbled on this, and I think this is great, and so I wanted to share it. Dr. King said, "Science investigates, religion interprets. Science gives man knowledge, which is power. Religion gives man wisdom, which is control. Science deals mainly with facts, religion deals mainly with values. The two are not rivals." And he said that back in August 20th of 1959 during a sermon, and I just, like I said, I just read that one today, and that one struck me. And the one that I always remember about Dr. King, and I think it's apropos, and Gail alluded to it when she was talking about Dr. King, Dr. King said, "Not everyone can be famous, but everyone can be great, because greatness is determined by the service that you give to society." And I love that one, and I like that for all the people that serve on our boards and our committees and our commissions, and, I mean, we get a modest pay for it, but they're doing it for free, and so I like that one, because I think it, like the Planning Commission people that spend so much time, the ZBA people, tough job, you know? So thanks to all those people that serve on those committees, and thanks to Dr. King.
Well-stated.
First, I want to say thanks to everyone who came out, thank you for your comments and everything that was said. Of course, I'm going to quote a Martin Luther King quote, and it says, "Life's most persistent and urgent question is what are you doing for others?" Martin Luther King Jr. Next, I want to, you know, just quickly, I don't want to be long, because it is really my bedtime. My phone went off at 10 o'clock. But real quickly, I do want to say this, I love South Haven, which I know all of us do, we all love South Haven, and we all want what's best for South Haven, and we know that South Haven will never look like it did 50-something years ago, not even 30-something years ago, or 20 years. We know that with time, everything progresses. I heard someone talk about fear, and I'll have to admit, yes, I've been here all my life, all 53 years, and I am a little afraid, not afraid of the people, just afraid of the change. And, you know, when I look out my back door and I see these humongous homes going up, but I don't see any neighbors, it's kind of scary, because I'm so used to seeing children playing, you know, meeting new people as they move into the neighborhood. I mean, I can recall, you know, sitting outside and people moving to South Haven, and you get to know them, and, you know, they were lifetime friends, but that's no longer the case, and I'm not saying that I have, I don't have any animosity towards anyone who owns a short-term rental. I think that no one does, and we just all want balance, that's all that we want, and, you know, just the thought of, I may not ever be able to walk, I don't have any grandchildren, but somewhere in the future, you know, I may not ever have that chance of walking my grandchildren to school, because my children both say that it's too expensive to live here, and they just don't see it. So that's what makes me afraid, and that's what makes me sad. But again, I love South Haven, and I know we all do, but let's just try to come to a balance. Thanks.
Thank you, Michelle. Thanks, everybody. It's late. Okay, thanks, everybody, for coming. As we, again, celebrate the life of Dr. King, it's my sincerest hope that we continue to learn and grow from that. My quote, one that I've always liked, is, "We may have all come on different ships, we're all on the same ship now," which we are, we are as a community, we are as, you know, a society. We have done some good things, on that, I would congratulate Kim and staff for the work relative to DEI. This issue of rentals, yes, we will continue to talk, we'll continue to dialogue, it's a very complex issue, and I want everyone to know that we take it very seriously, and we would love nothing more than to put it behind us, keep moving forward. So on that note, let's leave. Seek a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.